And we will start with a roll call. So could I please ask Madam Clerk for a roll call?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Kohler.
Here.
Councilmember Hellman.
Here.
Vice Mayor Ackerman.
Here.
And Mayor Goddard.
I am here. Thank you very much. And moving on, can I ask for a motion for approval of the agenda and the affidavit of posting, please?
So move.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion Reed and a second Hellman. Councilmember Kohler.
Hi.
Councilmember Hellman.
Hi.
The member Reed.
Hi.
The Vice Mayor Ackerman.
Hi.
And myself, I vote aye and moving right along. So tonight, we are beginning the meeting with interviews and appointments. And we have several committees that we'll be interviewing for. I am assuming that all of the applicants who are scheduled to be interviewed are here. And we will go ahead and I'll let everybody know at once what our, what our process is for interviewing for members of boards and commissions. So what we'll ask you to do is go ahead and spend just a couple of moments talking about yourself, introducing yourself to us, give us an idea of what your interest is in serving. And then a couple of council members will ask a couple of questions and then we will bring it back and we'll go on to the next interviewee. So that is how it will go. And why don't we go ahead and begin with the applicants for the Climate Action Committee? And let's begin with, with Taj. So Taj, are you, are you here?
May I suggest we ask the applicants for the Climate Action Committee to raise their virtual hands?
That is a good suggestion. So.
I see Beth.
Okay. And is perhaps a phone number Taj?
Um, I don't believe so.
Okay, well then.
Give him a moment.
Yeah, no problem. I think let's go ahead and begin with Beth because I see her blue hand. And if Beth would like to be seen on the screen, then please let us know. And if not, we can do it just looking at your phone number or your name.
I'm fine being seen.
Okay, so Michelle, would you go ahead and make her scene?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
Okay. She should be coming on any moment. If you, you might need to start your video, Beth.
Okay.
Oh, there you are. Okay.
Hello, everyone.
Hi.
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 So it's very nice to see you. Thanks for joining us.
Yeah, sure.
If we were in the women's club, we'd be telling you not to fall off the stage backwards on your chair because the chair is right on the edge. So you're much safer here tonight than you would have been in person. Anyway, so Beth, thanks for stepping up and we'll go ahead and give you a couple of moments just to tell us a little about yourself and your interest in the Climate Action Committee.
Um, sure. So I've been interested in, you know, climate, climate change reversal for a while. But I've been intently studying it for about the last four years. I started a not-for-profit called Own It Economics that was to be educating people about how we have a broken system and that when we buy things, the embedded costs are often hidden, namely carbon emissions, plastic pollution, as well as diminished payment for labor because we have people who have, you know, slavery and a little bit better in other countries. And so my whole thing was that one should pay the full price for what they buy, not just the price that corporations charge. And then you wouldn't just buy something, you would actually own it. And by doing that, you would have to give to charities and a certain proportion to whatever you bought, blah, 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 lots of metrics there. So I started that. I didn't really get a lot of traction in the marketplace with yet another not-for-profit. So I am going to be winding down that org and starting off on a commercial adventure with the same philosophy, but just trying to take the activism into the market via an online course. Because it turns out, when you do own what you buy, there's a body of research about the health benefits of giving that are pretty astounding. And so, and I personally benefited from it and I can go on into that sometime too, over coffee or something. But nevertheless, it's a pretty elegant system. And then once I figured out, you know, it personally benefits me to give to charities on many levels, I started to wonder about, well, what would happen if the whole world did this? And so I started to compute. And then at this time, a friend of mine came on board and we crunched numbers for how much would it cost to reverse global warming if everyone in the middle class and above decided to own their goods? And that would be, and then also to get plastics out of oceans and then also to get rid of poverty and below. And it's roughly a hundred bucks a month for everybody in the middle class and above. If everyone did it, 763 million people on the planet qualify to be in that bracket, we could fix it all in 30 years. So that's my Own It Economics pitch.
All right. Wow. Very, very exciting.
Yeah.
Okay, so from here, and I'm going to move us a little bit along through here, Beth, because I know you applied for the Tree Committee. I was going to have you do both, but I realized they're very different. So let's go ahead and ask if there are council members that have questions about Beth's application for Climate Action.
That has come to a couple of meetings and I've been very impressed with her questions and contributions thus far. I, I don't have any questions for her because I think she's fully qualified and I'm excited at the, the prospect of her joining.
Well, I'll say the same. And Beth has also been on the subcommittee that I also serve on to work on the Climate Action Plan rewrite. And so I've had some, some chance to work with Beth and I, I don't have questions at this point, but thank you for applying, Beth.
Yeah, sure. Happy to do it.
So for those of us who haven't had the pleasure of working with you, although I know you from the past, John, Barbara, do you have any questions?
Um, I would just say just one question and thank you for applying, Beth, and for your energy and enthusiasm. Do you have a specific, you know, Climate Action is a really big task and there's a lot to do. Is there something specific that you would like to work on where you feel you can really make a contribution?
Well, I'm still getting the lay of the land. You know, I've lived in Fairfax for a while, but I've never participated at this level. So I'm just kind of learning, you know, frankly, the politics of the whole thing and also learning about with this, with the questionnaire that's happened online with how our population feels about certain. I was an activist with Critical Mass years ago and I'm really comfortable getting out into the public and galvanizing big groups of the people to just get active. And so I think once we have a direction for where we want to go top down, I want to start building coalitions from the bottom up to meet that so that we can start going at a quicker rate. And I'm seeing a big gap in our population's understanding of what is happening versus what is actually happening. I just don't see people really taking advantage of the information online. And I'm wondering how we can meet our population so that we act like a group of, in a town, you know, and really get that movement. So I think that's where I'm probably going to address strongest.
Okay, well, thanks. Thank you very much.
Sure.
I guess that's kind of related to my question in that, I mean, we have, Fairfax is kind of a unique place, but we have a wide range of people here, you know, and different views. And some people are really on board with climate change and some people are not as much, you know, and.
Yeah. I mean, either way, you're going to get affected by it, you know, whether you want to be on board or not.
Oh, there's no doubt.
That's a sad truth, you know.
Yeah, I was looking at try to, you know, advertise the real cost of gasoline.
Tough work, right?
You know, it's huge. I mean, people would never pay that, but they do. And they just don't know.
Right. That's right.
I guess, you know, do you have any particular education ideas?
You know, I find that just personal outreach does wonders, you know, to be accessible, to be humorous, to be lighthearted about the heavier stuff. And also just a willingness to have the tough conversations and not really try and tiptoe around things works wonders, you know? I mean, not that we like to utter his, that whose name shall not be pronounced that's in office now. You know, that was his appeal, right? I mean, he was frank and that was refreshing. And I don't know why liberals don't just go there. I mean, this is a time of urgency and I think it merits just some real frank discussions and let's just have it out. I'm fine with it, you know? What, I work in law a little bit. I'm not an attorney, I'm a paralegal, but in litigation mostly. And I'm just really comfortable with tension, you know? I'm okay walking people through that. They're not going to scare me. And, and so I think that that's just going to be a piece that's, you know, it's kind of like you're born at the perfect moment thing. And I'm having a feeling that's what, you know, one of the things I'm going to lend to this. Yeah.
Well, cool.
Great. Hey, thanks, Beth. Much appreciated. We're going to move on so that we get everybody in. And we'll come back to you for a couple of minutes about the trees.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is Taj, is Taj here?
Madam Mayor, I'm just working with Taj to see if I can get him logged in.
Okay.
You might want to move on to the Tree Advisory Committee interviews while we wait. Thank you.
Okay. Beth, I'll give you a break and we will go straight to, wow, your name just keeps popping up on my papers. Let's go on to Kim.
Okay. And Beth, I'm going to, I'm going to take you off the screen now and, and mute you. So we'll do the interviews one, so there's one person on stage, so to speak, at a time, just to let you know.
Okay.
Mayor, withdrew from, withdrew her application. The town clerk sent us.
Oh.
Yeah.
So it's Tom Childers.
Oh, you're right. I'm so sorry. I did get that email. Okay, so then moving on to Tom. Tom Childers, are you here and are you willing to be on screen? I see your hand.
Sorry, I'm just, I'm trying to do, I just have one more issue here to get. Let me see if I can do this. I'm just having a little trouble.
Take your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Beth. I don't know why I'm not able to do that right now. Okay. So, Tom.
On to Tom.
Tom, I've unmuted you. This is Michelle.
Hi, this is Tom.
Hi, Tom. So.
I'm on stream.
All right, good. So we just see you in, in freeze frame here. So that, that's fine. We can just, we'll, we'll go with it. So you heard how this normally works and we'll just use that same process. If you give us just a couple of minutes about yourself and your interest in the Tree Committee, and then we'll ask a couple of questions and they're short and sweet. And welcome.
Hi, Tom. You're muted.
You need to unmute.
You're muted though.
There we go. Hi, Bruce. Hi, Barbara.
Okay. So did you hear my brief instructions?
Um, yeah.
Okay, great. So anytime you're ready, go for it.
Okay. Well, I found out about the opening on the Tree Committee from Barbara Kohler and Ted Pugh. And I know Ted and actually Bruce from working on the General Plan Advisory Committee back in 2008, 2009, 2010. So I've lived in the town for 12 years and I live out on the west side in a house that I built over a several year period. So I'm very familiar with the town planning process. And we actually had tree issues around the house that we had to resolve as well. So I'm familiar with the Tree Committee from back then. I, I participate in a couple of public organizations. Like I'm the vice president of a water board for a very small water company in the Lassen area. And I'm on the Safety Committee for Meadowlands, which is the homeowners association in West Fairfax, next to Canyon Village. And we have a lot of concern about fire safety. And I also happen to live in a neighborhood where across the street on the Ross Valley, on school district property, there are trees that come down periodically and have to be removed. So I've also lost a couple of oaks on my own property to sudden oak death. And so I'm very familiar with the process, I'm pretty familiar with the process that the town goes through around trees. I mean, on the one hand, we want to preserve all of the heritage trees to the best of our ability. And on the other hand, when people are doing construction or a tree dies or a planted tree is inappropriate and, or there's a fire hazard, sometimes trees get removed. I think the Tree Committee, as far as I can tell, is mostly concerned with the removal of trees. I'm happy to serve the town again. And I attended the Tree Committee meeting on Monday, which was remarkably smooth. And it seems like that committee is actually functioning really well. So I'm happy to help.
Great. Thank you very much. Sounds good. So I think we'll open it up to a couple of questions from council. Anyone have any questions for Tom?
Well, I, we've had a lot of discussions about trees. It does come up as a fairly, an issue that people pay a good bit of attention to. And as you say, I think originally the Tree Committee was mostly focused on trees that need to be possibly taken down. But there's now talk about the maintenance of the town trees and just looking at a bit of a larger array of issues around trees. So I would assume you'd be comfortable with that, that realm as well, if that expansion kind of gradually happens.
Yeah, sure. I've had to deal with it on my own property. When we completed building the house, the fire department had some pretty strict requirements about clearing the property around the house. So I had, I worked with arborists repeatedly through the construction process and anywhere from removing trees that were about to come down anyway, to dealing with a tree that was dying of sudden oak death, to trimming trees that are, you know, fairly close to the house. It's, it's all familiar to me. And it seems like Ray Moritz is still the town arborist. And so I've worked with him before. And of course, he's also very active and fire safe Marin. So, you know, he's a good resource. He knows both sides of the equation.
Mm-hmm. Of that equation, but also of, of taking care of the trees. Not only limbing them for fire safety without hurting them, but actually helping them to, to stay healthy. Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions? No? Okay. So Tom.
I guess you're, you need another question or, I mean, I guess I would direct it more towards, you know, take, you know, taking healthy care of trees. I mean, Ray is a good resource there, but have you talked to arborists over the years about that sort of approach?
You know, I've worked with two arborists because I have a lot of coastal live oak on my property. And I live on about a little over a third of an acre on the hillside on Glen Drive. And sudden oak death is an issue because it's come through the area and killed a half a dozen trees within, I would say, 200 yards of my house. So I have a backpack sprayer and there's a compound, there's an antifungal compound that you can go and spray on trees. And I've actually gone and methodically hit a number of the trees in my house to take, around my house to try and prevent them from succumbing. It seems like more of a problem in drought years. So I think the trees get very stressed when they go through several dry cycles. And around August or September is when trees really, if a tree is going to succumb to sudden oak death, that's when it happens. The fungus is propagated by bay trees. And so in a mixed forest like we live in here with bays and oaks, the bays can be a problem. I have friends that I've talked to about this, like in some cases, you might want to remove a bay tree to help, that's climbing through an oak tree to help avoid the propagation of the fungus. But ultimately, I think tree care is false. I mean, and we have to do what we need to do to keep the area fire safe. So that might mean limbing as well as cleaning the ground. And I've had success spraying the trees with the antifungal. At least none of the ones I've sprayed died. So it's a, it's kind of a tricky and challenging area. But I think, I mean, like everybody in town, I love our trees. And I have a personal relationship with the oaks that are right behind my house. So I think this is an area that we all, we can all handle easily with some common sense and a little guidance from the experts.
Yeah, thank you.
I just want to say thank you to Tom for applying because I think he brings kind of a breadth of experience with kind of broader issues and some of the issues we've dealt with. And I know, Tom, you may not have been involved more recently, but you know, people dearly love our trees in town. So when we were doing the parcade, John Reed and I worked with Ray Garrett to make sure we preserve some trees that otherwise would have been removed. So we look forward to kind of that balance of some trees absolutely have to come out, others, it's kind of a delicate balance. So just knowing you, I think you've got that sort of ability to work on both ends of the spectrum. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Thanks, Tom. We're going to interview one other person who's applied for the Tree Committee and one other applicant for the Climate Action. And then we'll come back and discuss and make a decision. So hold tight.
Great, I'll be here. Thank you.
All right, great, thanks. Michelle. Michelle, let's go ahead and have Beth come back so that we finish Tree. Then we'll go back and have Taj.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sounds good. And let me get Beth. All right. Whoops. Where did Beth?
I'm here.
Okay, good. I unmuted you, but I.
Do I need to raise my hand again?
Nope.
Okay.
We see you. We just, then you just turn your camera on.
No, that was my fault. I hadn't done that.
Okay.
Haven't really done any interviews on Zoom. Okay, wonderful. Welcome back. So now in the, wearing a different hat, we'd like to know a little bit about why you'd like to join the Tree Committee and then we'll ask you a couple of questions.
Okay. Well, I mean, trees are inherently part of climate change. So, you know, I definitely have a focus on preserving the heritage trees that we have and have learned about some town methodologies or lack thereof on preserving them. And so I'm looking to get involved with that. I'm also a big water conservationist and so, you know, diverting water to trees that are heritage trees for climate change. Getting in front of the curve on, on carbon sequestration instead of being in reaction, you know, to keep that ecosystem going. It's an engine that, you know, helps us with climate, with carbon sequestration. And I do know about the ordinance, the issue around trees coming down and the political issues around that and the sensitivity around that. Having worked in law and worked on some property cases, I understand the nuances there and the conflicting interests of private ownership versus trees and all that. And so I'm sensitive to that and feel like I juggled both of those realities well. And I care about trees, you know? I mean, if they're dying, they need to come down so they don't hurt other trees or other people. So I get that, you know?
Great. Great. Thank you so much. Questions from council? I guess I have a question. I'm just curious, just because I served on the Tree Committee for the first couple of years I was on council. And I didn't know that much about particular trees in terms of their, the pyrophitic nature of trees, the native species. I'm just wondering, and I learned, I'm just wondering where your knowledge base is or do you have some experience in that way? It's not that it's critical at all, but I'm just curious.
Yeah. I would say probably not as deep as I'm going to be having if I get on the Tree Committee. And also in the interest of full disclosure.
You cut out Beth.
Prior to applying for this, am I correct?
Well, we just lost a little.
Hey, Beth, can you repeat what you just said? Cause you cut out there.
Sure. I'm just, in the interest of full disclosure, does one need to attend a meeting before applying? Because I wasn't aware that there was a meeting on Monday. I was looking forward to the fourth Monday and I have actually not attended a Tree Committee meeting. So if that immediately disqualifies me, I'm happy to just step down.
You know, I'm not a big fan of immediate disqualifying.
I want to be honest about that.
But that is a council policy that we made kind of a while ago that people attend. And it looks like Beth is applying for one committee. We have somebody willing to apply for the second committee. So maybe that's kind of a middle ground.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I think this will come into our discussion.
Okay. I just want to be honest there.
Appreciate that. Any other questions for Beth?
So is she withdrawing?
No.
No.
Oh.
No, I just realized that, I didn't realize there was a meeting on Monday.
Yeah.
And because that's the third Monday and I guess it's a makeup meeting. And then there's the fourth Monday that's the real meeting, so.
Right. Yeah, there's been a lot of shuffling and communications.
Right.
Challenge. It all stemmed from the PSPS. But I do have a question. If you have a point of view on, have you been following the, what, what Tom and Bruce exchanged on with regard to the tree maintenance? It was first raised at council and there's been some follow-up related to our town owned trees and the state of them. And they're, they're, they haven't been maintained and so we need to start taking better care of them. Well, that's, that's my opinion, but I think it's probably broad based opinion.
Yep, yep. You cut out a little bit on your question, but from what I heard, you wrap up with, with that that's a concern to maintain.
Now, do you have a point of view on the role of the Tree Committee with regard to tree maintenance and how you would work with town staff related to that?
Well, I guess you could say I would be very ambitious in working with town staff and helping figure out a way to preserve our heritage trees. I mean, that's a huge concern of mine. I understand that with the Tree Committee, you also have people who are applying for permits to trim their trees and also cut down their trees and that one needs to visit each of the trees and have an opinion. And sometimes you do it in a group and sometimes you don't. My mountain sounds like a good time to me. So I was figuring on doing that. But, but yeah, I would, I am in earnest about working with the town to see about preserving our heritage trees. And I understand that that's a bit outside of the box of what is normally happening or what has happened on the Tree Committee. But, you know, we're in a new level of stewardship with our earth and that's something I look to grow into.
Okay. Thank you very much, Beth.
Sure. Yep, yep.
I think we're good. So we're gonna, we're gonna click you out one more time and then invite Taj. And, and so hang around. And uh, and so hang around, please.
You, Beth.
So Michelle, are we all good? Do we have Taj on board?
Um, I, I'm afraid we do not, and I'm just checking one last time. I apologize. So I think what we might have to do is postpone his interview to a later date.
And that, that, that works fine because we do have um, several vacancies.
Yes.
So we can do that with, with no, with no trouble.
Yes, and I, I also wanted to mention for the record that the um, Measure F Oversight Committee interviews were also continued postponed to a later date.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I did not announce that. The applicants are aware that we've continued it to December 16th. There was an applicant who was not able to attend tonight to be interviewed. So um, we've postponed. Um, so going back to our discussion, bringing it back to council, we need to appoint.
Want to open the public comment first?
Sorry, I'm so sorry. Lots of shuffling tonight. Yes, let's uh, go on out to the public for public comment on any of the interviewees. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak?
I do not see anyone raising their hand, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so seeing none, we'll bring it back. Um, why don't we uh, quickly talk about the um, Climate Action Committee? And then we'll move on to the tree committee. Anyone have any thoughts about climate action, Barbara?
Uh, well, I think Beth is clearly very qualified and she's attended two meetings. I would, when you're ready, like to make a motion or maybe one of the members of the Climate Action Committee would like to make that motion, but I think she would make a good fit for the committee.
I would be happy to make that motion.
I would be happy to second the motion.
And with, with great thanks to Beth for her application and for the work she's already done. And look forward to continuing to work with her if we vote her in.
Yeah, okay. So great. So we have a motion, um, Ackerman and a second Hellman. And uh, all those in favor, Barbara?
Hi.
Sorry, we do have to do the roll call, Stephanie. It seems easier to do hands, but um, so Barbara, yes, uh, John?
Certainly, yes.
Okay, uh, Stephanie?
Aye.
Bruce?
Absolutely.
And myself, I double that absolutely and um, like to thank Beth for stepping up. Um, and I know you're going to bring quite a force to this Climate Action Committee. Um, and so let's move on to our discussion about the tree committee. Um, we, we have two applicants for one vacancy. And so um, we can hash that around a little bit, talk about um, uh, any questions, concerns, we can do that and then go ahead and.
I have a question.
Yes.
Um, is there um, a timeframe where the current uh, people on the committee will roll off? Or are there any, or is it just a, a rolling position?
They have terms.
They have terms.
I can answer that, Madam Mayor. This is Michelle, the clerk.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The tree committee has undefined terms because it started out as a committee that was representative of other committees where they already had terms. For example, we had a planning commissioner and et cetera. And for now, uh, there aren't term, any terms.
So my observation is that this committee is managed rather loosely. I had a personal citation, as some of you might know. And I was, I was told that we could go and go to the committee for a post citation um, permit. And then my husband went and he was basically reprimanded that that doesn't exist, that process doesn't exist. So there's a disconnect between staff and the committee. So that's one thing. And now I'm hearing there's no terms for the committee. So whoever joins this committee, and we can talk to Ted Pugh, but I'd like to clean this up a little. Cause I, you know, we just, it doesn't, it's not a tightly run operation. And in my limited time here on the council and my exposed, personal exposure, it doesn't feel like it's.
Um, you know, I looked at, Michelle, maybe there's something that I'm recalling that's incorrect. But I remember when we changed the tree committee to have at-large members instead of the various members of the three committees or boards, that we did say at that time that we were gonna put terms on those. And I, that's why I assumed we've done that. But I think that's something that we've been remiss about. And I think we were going to do the same for the Climate Action Committee if we haven't done that already, where we create terms of, is it three or four years generally on our committee? So I think that's something we should do. But rather than that, um, I would like to say, I think, you know, I, I think that Beth has been appointed to the Climate Action Committee and unfortunately she wasn't able to attend the meeting, which is our council policy. I also think that Tom Childers has worked with the town for a number of years in the past. And I think it would be a good opportunity for him to get involved. But I do think uh, for a future agenda item, we should put terms on the tree committee members as well as the climate action if that hasn't been done yet.
Yeah, so can, thank you, Barbara. Can we do that? Can we, can we evaluate who's been on the tree committee? And if it exceeds the term limits that we've established, maybe there's an opportunity.
Oh, there's Garrett. Good.
Yeah, okay. So maybe just to touch on this. Originally, as one of you had, had mentioned, is the reason we allowed at-large members is because members of those prospective bodies, the planning commission, uh, I think it's Park and uh, just couldn't find a member to volunteer to sit on the committee. And what we did for the council in order to fill those gaps, because those members of those bodies weren't attending, we said you could appoint at-large, those at-large persons could at any time, if one of these bodies like Park or the planning commission decided to appoint a member or open space, appointing a member, then they would take the place of this at-large member. Now, what I'm hearing is that because some at-large members that are taking the place of the committee members may be on there too long, perhaps the council wants to consider some level of limitation for that, including for your at-large members. But I just wanted to clarify, that was conscious effort of how we set it up back when we couldn't get any of the committee members who actually attend in the tree committee meetings.
I think, Garrett, that's, that's accurate, but I think our expectations that one of those committees or boards, and it was Park, Open Space and the Planning Commission, are probably not going to jump at this opportunity because they all felt very stretched. So I think we should consider, we still have that option, but if we add terms, and I don't know that anybody's been on too long, but I think we need to create terms that would be staggered so that we don't lose everybody all at once.
Right.
Thing which I think we did with the Climate Action Committee, or maybe we haven't done that yet.
We did.
But, okay, great. So the same sort of approach that we did with Climate Action. But still, if for some reason the planning commission very much wants to have one of their members on the tree committee, then we'd still have that option of.
Right. You just, you just want to create a limit. But I'll tell you, the ordinance was passed in November 2018. So they've been on for an essence, two years.
Okay, and I think aren't most of our uh, committees four years or is it three years?
Four years.
We have them staggered. Some cases they're three. We can, so what I'm hearing from the council, you like to modify this, create some staggered terms. So at least there's turnover at the at-large appointments in the event these committees never appoint anybody.
Yeah, and actually, Garrett, we, we may want to, when we bring this for discussion, we may want to look at changing the structure, given that it doesn't really make sense to me to wait until one of the committee members from one of the boards or commissions decides, hey, I want to jump on there and then it knocks somebody else off. So I think it's worth a longer discussion.
So you want to re, so you want to revisit that discussion? Because we had a discussion related to that exactly, of how that whole process would work.
Yeah, I think it's, we, we have a lot of at-large members who, and members of the community who are interested at this point. And we did not have that then. And I haven't seen any of the commissions go, oh, man, I want a spot there. So we may just want to discuss it, see what people think.
Okay. And then for the other issue that was raised, I just wanted to point out is it's been a matter of practice that we allowed people after the fact to go to the tree committee to see if the tree committee, under those circumstances, would have approved the permit if it was before the fact. And so we have allowed that in the past, although I don't believe these existing members on this tree committee have ever heard of such a thing, because I don't think anything has come to them during their terms. But that was a matter of practice. So we can also clarify that too in, in the code. Cause the code doesn't address that one way or the other.
Okay, so with that, can we go back to, I would like to make a motion to appoint Tom Childers to the tree committee.
Oh, we got public comment.
No, we, we actually did have public comment on all interviewees, which I, I clearly stated. Um, but I'm not sure, I, I think maybe a bit more discussion than just pointing to a motion. If anyone else had anything to say, if I may respectfully, Barbara?
Well, I, I certainly support Tom Childers. I have worked with him before, as he said, and I, I think he would be an excellent member. I'll just clarify just on that discussion we just had about revisiting the tree committee and clarifying things, which I would support. I think we should do that. That the limits that we put, the terms that we put on membership in committees isn't quite the same as term limits. It doesn't mean that those members have to leave.
Right.
As they come back for reappointment. And if somebody else wants to be appointed, then there might be a choice to be made. So that's, that's all that means. It doesn't mean that they're off the committee. Just to clarify.
Thank you for that clarification. That's better said.
Okay, so did anyone else have anything before we move uh, the motion that Barbara's put on the floor? Okay, so um, I, I, I just wanted to say quickly that I, I really appreciate Beth and the way she's stepped up in the intersection with climate and trees. And uh, you know, not everybody completely gets that. And so um, uh, no matter what happens here, um, all the work on the Climate Action Committee that you will do, um, I, I will look forward to how we integrate all of the systems that are um, contributing to our massive greenhouse gas emissions and the mitigations that are, that are in front of us. So just wanted to say that and um, thank you, Beth.
Thank you.
So Barbara, did you want to restate your motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to, first of all, thank Beth, but I make a motion to appoint uh, Tom Childers to the tree committee. And I think John seconded, but go ahead.
I did, but I'd also take this opportunity to thank Beth for stepping forward on this too. And I look forward to seeing what she does in public service. It's probably going to be good. So, again.
All right, great. So we have a motion Kohler and a second Reed, a council member Hellman. Council member Kohler.
Aye.
Uh, council member Reed.
Aye.
By Mayor Ackerman.
Aye.
And myself, I vote aye. And uh, I see hands are up, but um, unfortunately I did make it clear we have to start our regular, our regular special meeting now. That we were taking public comment on all of the interviewees after they were interviewed for both committees. So I'm sorry to not take your comment at this time. So moving right along, uh, if I can find my. No, what we explained is that we're continuing Measure F uh, interviews to December 16th and the applicants are aware it's uh, one of the applicants was unable to attend tonight. So moving right along to the regular agenda. And I have the great fortune of having uh, a wonderful proclamation in front of me. Um, and I get to read a proclamation in honor of and honoring Norma McFadden, who is the mask maker extraordinaire. And I don't know if, is Norma, is Norma with?
She's on.
She's here.
She's here. Okay, wonderful. Wherever you are out there, Norma, I uh, I, I, I want to express my extraordinary gratitude for everything you've done in producing bazillions of masks. I am absolutely blown away by how it is that your hands and your mind could put themselves to beautiful fabrics that each and every one is magnificently put and sewn and darned and beautifully, not darned, that's the wrong word, sorry. Um, and then beautifully um, packaged so that we could put them out to members of the community in need. So with that, I'm going to read this proclamation. Whereas Norma McFadden is resident of Guernville, California, is an accomplished fiber artist and quilter and is a longtime friend of council member Barbara Kohler. And whereas at the advent of the COVID-19 pandemic, shelter in place orders, Norma began making and donating cloth face masks for the homeless, the Salvation Army and others in the Russian River area. Whereas at the request of council member Kohler, Norma began making cloth face masks for Fairfax businesses to help them reopen safely. She does not take any financial compensation and donates all of her masks. And whereas Norma washes and irons all of her masks so they are safe and immediately ready for use, they are eclectic fabrics which fit our Fairfax vibe. And whereas Mayor Goddard and council member Kohler began distributing Norma's masks in packs of five to each business on three occasions, on July 3rd, July 22nd and August 14th. And whereas Norma keeps making masks for Fairfax and more than 250 individually bagged masks were distributed throughout downtown on September 16th and October 15th. And whereas Norma has made and donated masks for Marin City, the Canal and West Marin, and has also donated more masks to Fairfaxians at Victory Village, to our age-friendly 90 and better gift basket recipients, and made special themed masks for Potting Shed, Amalie and Hummingbird. And whereas Norma has made and donated a total of more than 1,200 cloth face masks for Fairfax and other Marin locales to date, she is currently making more for Fairfax. And whereas Norma's through hard work and generous donations, she has helped Fairfax reopen safely and has made our town a safer place. And now therefore, be it hereby proclaimed by the Town Council of the Town of Fairfax, in acknowledgement of her contributions to the town and to the community, the Town of Fairfax extends its gratitude and appreciation to Norma McFadden.
You're here.
Thank you.
If I may say, Norma has also come up with a new design with worst grade for people who wear hearing aids. And because the one loops over your ears, just pop your hearing aids off and it's, you know, they fall down on the ground, whatever. It's a problem. And she came up with a design that works great and they work great and thank you.
Madam Mayor, uh, Norma has her hand up. May I unmute her?
Absolutely, absolutely.
There.
Yeah, I would love to see a face to go with the masks.
I know.
An odd concept.
Norma, did you have something to say or um?
Um, you're unmuted, Norma. You might have to turn your volume up if you're on the computer.
She's deciding whether she wants to speak.
And if you don't want to speak, that's fine too.
So.
You've now muted yourself. I'm not sure if you want to unmute yourself, Norma. Now you're unmuted.
I don't want to cut you off, but if um, we may need to, we may need to call you later and have a conversation instead of here on the Zoom. But anyway, thank you so much and with all, all our, all our gratitude and gratitude from the Town of Fairfax.
Thank you.
Thank you, Norma.
Okay.
Norma, um, I think there's somebody who wanted to speak to this item. I know Liz Darby was going to call in.
Ah, ah, wonderful. Um, so um, who, Michelle, would you see, because I see other.
Yes. Yes.
Other?
Would you like to open the public comment, Madam Mayor?
Yes, please, Madam Clerk.
Okay, then we shall. First, there's Deb, Deborah Benson, followed by Liz Darby. So I will unmute Deborah. Deborah, you're still muted.
Not the greatest night for technology, it seems.
Oh, I, I, I'm wondering if we want to move on to Liz and then see if Deborah chimes back in.
Sure. Okay, Liz, I've unmuted you.
Good evening, can you hear me? Good evening, everybody. My name is Liz Darby. I work for the County of Marin in the Community Development Agency. And I've actually never met Norma. I met her through Barbara, who I've been working with for years on addressing the disparities in the county around affordable housing. Most of my work is in housing, but since March of this year, I've been working with the Health and Human Services Department to address the COVID-19 epidemic in our underserved communities. One of the two, the two of the, of the communities that I've been working with very closely is in Marin City and in the Canal. If you remember, it feels like three years ago, but it was just a few months ago, there was a scarcity of masks. We were very concerned about our African-American population, looking at what was going on across the nation. We were very concerned that there was going to be a huge surge of positive testing in Marin City. Those individuals who lived there struggled through so many challenges because of lack of transportation, access to food, grocery stores, and all of the other disparities that we have, and that Barbara knows about because she's been working with me to address that. That said, Norma stood up. Norma bought, developed, delivered, well, Barbara delivered, actually, hundreds of masks to residents in Marin City. Not only did she deliver masks that were safe and handmade and full of love, as far as I was concerned, but she made them out of African fabric, so much so that they were so sought after that we pulled some aside because they were going to use them for special events. The community has been incredibly grateful for her outpouring of support and caring for all that she's done for Marin City. But wait, that's not all. After Norma provided us with hundreds of masks in Marin City, she said, that's not enough. Let me give to the people who are most directly affected by this COVID-19 epidemic, and those are our residents in the Canal. Norma sewed hundreds of masks that I was able to deliver to our community nonprofits in the Canal, who were grateful to give them out during our food bank lines, during their people who were on the street, working as day workers. And Norma has no idea of the impact that she's had on the day-to-day living of everybody in this community. So for that, I want to thank you for acknowledging her great work and for her compassion. And Norma, we've never met, and I hope to meet you one day soon. And to Barbara, thank you so much for making that connection. It has had a real impact on our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Liz. I just want to add something, since Norma's having some technical difficulties. She just texted me wanting to say thank you to everyone so much for the kind words and all the gratitude. And she's very, she's probably the most humble person I've ever met. And just one thing to let her know that Mayor Renee will sign the proclamation email to her. But I don't know if there's any, I think maybe Deb Benson.
Was there any other public comment?
If Deborah Benson wants to make a comment.
Maybe her hand was left up from the last item.
Okay, I'm going to, okay, I'm going to lower her hand and see what happens.
All right, wonderful. Well, thanks for being with us, Norma, and I hope that someday we'll get to meet you.
Yes.
I'll have her come down. By the way, just one quick thing, she sent me another text. She wants to thank Renee and I for delivering all these masks, which we think is the most fun ever.
Okay, all righty, thanks, everyone. So we are going to move along. And our next item on the agenda tonight is a public hearing item. And as many of you know, this item is continued from our November 4th, 2020 meeting. It's an appeal of the Planning Commission action approving Hill Area Residential Development, excavation, design review, and tree removal permits for the expansion and the remodeling of the single-family home located at 6 Walsh Lane. Bruce?
Just a reminder that as of, as the last meeting in which we discussed this, or you all discussed this, I need to recuse myself because of the proximity of where I live to 6 Walsh Lane, so.
Okay. Thank you, Bruce. I forgot.
Good luck.
Okay. All right, so if I could go ahead and please ask staff to deliver the staff report.
Kara Spencer is ready to do that. Madam Mayor, oh, there she is.
Okay.
Kara, you're still muted.
Hi. So basically, what I'm going to do is kind of address what was raised at the last meeting that needed additional clarification. So I'm just going, so it's basically attachment E to the staff report. I'm going to go over some of those points in that. Okay, so several assertions were made at the last town council meeting on November 4th that needed additional research and clarification from staff and the town attorney. So we, we did our additional research. So one, one assertion was that the project needs a variance because it proposes to alter and enlarge an existing non-conforming structure. Town Code Chapter 17.016 governs non-conforming uses in structures. Based on this chapter, the existing home is considered legal, a legal, non-conforming structure. And this is because it intrudes six inches into the required five-foot setback on the northeast side, and because it intrudes nine feet at the rear deck into the required 35-foot combined front and rear setback. So subsection 17.016.040A requires a variance for alterations or enlargements of non, of a non-conforming structure. However, subsection C provides, quote, "The restriction in this division shall not apply," and it lists four different conditions. So basically, what subsection C does is it says you can alter or enlarge a non-conforming structure as long, without a variance, if you meet these, the, these four conditions. So the first condition is for projects that are simple window replacements or energy efficiency improvements, and that, that doesn't apply to this project. So the next, the next three conditions, all of which have to be met, so it says, "Or when all of the following conditions are met." So the, the following conditions that need to be met are, the first one is the off-street parking requirements are met, or a variance for an exception has been granted, and the project meets the off-street parking requirements. I don't know if you want me to go into detail about that, I can, or I could just keep going.
Go ahead, Kara, and then if there are specific questions, we'll come back to ask.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then also, the second condition that has to be met is that the work does not increase in existing or create any new non-conformity. So the project is not proposing to intrude further into the side rear or front yard setbacks. So it's not going to go any farther. So right now, at one side, it's four feet, six inches. It's not going to go to four feet, you know, it's not, it's not going to increase the amount at all into the side. And it's not going to increase the amount, it's at the back that goes into the rear combined front and rear setback. So because of that, it's, it's not in increasing, it's not going to increase the existing non-conforming individual side or combined front and rear setbacks. And the increase in height is, the highest it's going to be is 31 feet, 10 inches, and that's at the rear. And that proposed height is still within the 35-foot limit. So it's not creating a new non-conformity by increasing the height. And then the, finally, the last condition that has to be met is that the structure or building is not located in an area that, it's not located in a ridgeline scenic corridor or in a flood zone, and it's not in either one of those so areas. So because of, because the project meets all those three conditions, it does not need a variance for altering or adding on to it. And it's section 17.016.040 is not applicable to the project. So, and then is this, a second issue that needed clarification was, does the lower floor count toward the home's floor area? So historically, the town has not included the unfinished lower level of, in the floor area of a home. So Fairfax Town Code Section 17.008.020 defines what a habitable room is. And that is a room in a dwelling unit designed to be used for living, sleeping, eating, or cooking, excluding bathrooms, toilet compartments, closets, halls, and similar space. And the California Building Code, Building Code basically has the same definition for habitable space. It's a space in a building for living, sleeping, eating, or cooking. Bathrooms, toilet rooms, closets, halls, storage, or utility spaces in similar areas are not considered habitable spaces. And then the California Building Code further identifies that for a room to be habitable, so it has to be a minimum of seven feet high. And so habitable space, including hallways and portions of basements containing those spaces, have to have a minimum ceiling height of seven feet. Bathrooms, toilet rooms, laundry rooms can be six feet, eight inches. Okay, and then it also discusses that, you know, it needs to have sufficient light, ventilation, it needs to have heat, and it needs to be a minimum of 70 square feet. However, nowhere does the California Building Code state that if a room is seven feet or higher and a minimum of 70 square feet, that it has to be included in the floor area. That's just the minimum that it needs to be counted as habitable, but it doesn't mean that it's habitable if it meets that minimum. And then the handwritten Marin County Tax Assessor records, which are included as an attachment to attachment E, clearly show that the subfloor area is not considered habitable space by the, by the assessor and has not been assessed as such. So then regarding the floor, floor addition of the additional space, according to the Marin County Tax Assessor, the home has a total of 1,510 square feet and on a lot that is 7,200 square feet. Okay, the project's going to add 406 square feet to the existing floor. The subfloor, which was measured by the applicant, and later yesterday, I and Ben Berto measured it as well. It's, it's, you know, about 1,022 square feet of area. So the project would add 96 square feet to the subfloor level, bringing it up to a total of 1,118 square feet. Okay, of this subfloor, 950 would be converted to living space, to habitable space. Okay, 93 would remain unfinished, non-habitable, and 75 feet would be for stairs. So the project would add a total, okay, of the 406 and then the 950 that would be converted. So the total adds up to 1,356 square feet. The finished total on the home after the conversion of the space and the additions would be 2,866 square feet of floor area. So majority of the additional living space is created by converting the non-habitable space that already exists within the home into livable space. And the, this addition is not going over, it's maxing out at the far of, of the floor area ratio that's allowed, which is .40. Okay, and then there was another allegation made that a fire truck would not be able to access the house. And the project applicant met with Jeff Ous and Rob Bastianon of the Ross Valley Fire Department on January 28th, 2020. And as a result of that meeting, the fire department agreed that there is space for a 20-foot-by-30-foot clear area at the intersection of Walsh Lane and Mansita that will satisfy the street width requirement for a fire truck. Ross Valley Fire asked the applicant to provide a drawing illustrating that, and that is on the project plan's page F2. And then this, the fire district's approval of this as an area was confirmed in a written email from Rob Bastianon to me, and I could share my screen and show you if you'd like. And the fire hydrant that serves the property also meets the fire flow requirements, and a fire flow test isn't required. So the fire department independently signed off on the project. But I think that addressed the concerns that, that were raised, and that's all we have for.
Thank you so much, Kara, for taking it back and getting such thorough information back to us. So how I would like to manage this tonight is that we'll go ahead as town council, ask questions of Kara, or Ben, or Janet Colson, our town attorney is here. And once we have asked our questions, I will open the public hearing. If council has questions of the appellant or the applicant, that would be our time to do that. And then we'll go out to public comment. Then we will go ahead and bring it back to town council. So the next step is for town council questions for staff. Does anyone have any questions? Stephanie?
Oh, I do, but I didn't ask, I can go first.
Oh, I thought, I thought you raised your hand.
That's fine. Thank you, that was really good. Thank you so much. The 93 square feet that would remain unfinished, I don't recall that from the last meeting. Is that new, a new piece of information?
No, maybe it just wasn't articulated at the last meeting, but that space has always been proposed to, it's, there's part, since the lot is sloped, the, the ceiling heights are kind of, you know, they don't quite go up to seven feet in parts of the underfloor. And that area is sort of towards the front of the home on the street side, and that's just going to be for like utility stuff, like, you know, heater, water heater, stuff like that. It's not going to be any sort of space that was ever, it's never been proposed for habitable or living space.
So I, I really want to go there for a little bit. So is it on the design as unfinished space? Can we point to where it is located in the basement? Because I'd like to understand it better.
Um, yeah, I, so if you look at your plans.
Yeah.
So let me grab the plans here. Oh, no. See what I got here. Sorry, wrong staff of papers. So I've got a big set of plans here, sorry, won't waste too much time fiddling with these. But basically, it's on.
What page should I go to?
Sorry, I'm trying to find the page. So it's. Okay, so if you look at. Sorry, I don't want to waste a little time here. Yeah, so it's on page A 2.3. So if you look at the, it's the buildout of the lower floor. It's showing it developed with the new spaces, and that unused space is. And that, um, unused space is, um, it's shown it, um, as utility. And then there's also a lot of crawl space.
Yes, that's on the east side of the, of the floor area shown on that plan.
Is that where it says location for furnace?
Yeah. Location for furnace, and then there's this crawl space area as well.
I'd add that that currently exists, uh, as less than seven feet in height from the cement to the bottom of the floor joists above. It's completely unfinished space, as is the entire basement. But that one is currently less than seven feet from cement slab to bottom of floor joists.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Um, my, my next question is related to, um, if there was a permit for the legal, the, the existing structure for the, for the legal nonconformity of the structure? Do we have that on record?
Um, so, you know, that's why, so part of it with it it being legally non-conforming is the house was constructed prior to, um, the, the code section that, um, uh, specified the setbacks. So because it was constructed, um, prior to this town's establishment of those setbacks for the lot, it, um, it, it already, you know, it, it, there weren't any requirements at the time. Basically, what I'm trying to say is when the house was constructed, it, it didn't have those required setbacks at the time. So the house was built within the setbacks because, um, they didn't exist to that. You know, they, but they were kind of created after for the home.
Something we call, it's something we call grandfathering. So it was consistent with the regulations in effect at the time. Subsequent regulations adopted by the town made that legal conforming structure into a legal non-conforming structure. It's not unusual in town for structures to have been built before we created things like combined front rear or combined side setbacks.
Okay, so the answer is no. I, I understand, but I just said the answer is no.
Right, we have sufficient records to establish that the structure as it existed prior to the inception of the current code was, uh, legal at that time.
So you have records of the construction of this home, but you don't have a permit for the nonconforming, is that right?
Because when, the time that it was constructed, it didn't need a permit because.
Right.
Um, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. And then I, I'm just wanting to make sure that I'm tracking as far as, and you did a really fine explanation, I just want to make sure I'm tracking because this is still relatively new to me. Um, as far as the, um, explanation related to, um, I'm looking at, um, subsection C two, uh, B. So you're, we're saying that, um, or your recommendation is that the proposed project does not increase the existing nonconformity in the setback or the combined front rear setback as there is no further intrusion into the side rear or front setbacks. The increase in height is not creating a new nonconformity. So you're saying basically the line of the home isn't changing, and despite the fact that we're going thirty-one feet, that does not meet the requirement for.
It's not a trigger. Um, if you look at A.
Thank you.
If you look at.
Happy to help with that. Anne, do you want me to help with that?
I, I, I mean, I think it's, I just confirming my understanding. The fact, that despite the fact that we're going thirty, not we, they want to go thirty-one feet high, and that's substantially higher and magnifying, right? The size of this structure, it's not triggering, to use your word.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, because, because the height is not already nonconforming, and it's in the height limit.
Right. Okay, I, I don't have any questions right now. Any more questions? Thank you.
Uh, anyone, anyone else with questions for staff?
Good question.
Barbara?
Yeah, so, um, I think all this, I had asked a few questions beforehand, which I had answered, but the question I have is when we talk about, um, okay, now I've lost it. There's too many papers in front of me. Okay. So on the fire department access on the memo from Cara and Janet Coulson, it says, um, the distance to the rear portions of the residence at Sixth Walsh Lane relating to the fire department access. And it says, see plans, page F-two. There is no page F-two, so I don't know what you're referring to because all these pages of plans that we have are in Attachment D. Maybe it was something, maybe there is an F-two and I just missed it. Oh, I see it. Okay. So that's the fire department notes on F-two. Okay, it's just, they don't have any notes saying that this doesn't meet. I mean, they talk about notes, but nothing specific about, um, about the twenty-by-thirty-foot clear space. We're, we just have a confirmation email, which I think Cara, you volunteered to show that on the screen, and I think that would be helpful. Could you show that on the screen? Because the plans don't specifically speak to that. And I think showing the email from the fire department saying it's good to go would be helpful.
Sure, absolutely. Um, let me share my screen. Okay, so I actually need, um.
Need to be a co-host.
Yeah, or yeah, or you need to have, um, the ability to share my screen.
Michelle?
Hi Cara, I'm here. Um, you should be able to, um, as a panelist, share your screen. It's not letting you?
It says host disabled attendee screen sharing. Oh, wait a minute.
You're not an attendee.
No, I know. I'm not sure why it's not letting me do it.
Hmm.
Yeah, um, what I, I guess I could email this, uh, to Michelle, and she, she could share it. Should I do that?
Yeah, why don't you go ahead?
Okay, sure.
Would want to see that.
Sure, so here we go. But I don't.
John, do you, do you want to add something here, or do you have a question?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, on page F-two, there is a twenty-by-thirty-foot fire truck space marked on that map.
It did. Oh, I was looking for it in the notes. Oh, I see it. Okay. Um, I do see that Mansonita Road at the corner of Walsh Lane. But I also think if possible, if we can see that email, I think that would be helpful. So thanks, John, for adding that.
So, okay, am I muted? No, so, okay, so I sent it to you, Michelle. It's an attachment, it's a PDF. And, um, hopefully you got that. It says RE Six Walsh Lane Fairfax Edition.
Yeah, I see it.
Okay, great.
Just hang on, because I'm on two different computers, so it might take me just a minute.
We are stretching our tech ability tonight. You guys are doing a great job.
Yeah, I still, I'm still trying and I can't, so it's all right.
Okay, that's going to take just a minute if you want to.
Okay, Laura, did you have anything else you wanted to ask at this time?
Uh, that was one of the things I was just clarifying. But I would also add that regardless of the potential for this house, everybody on Walsh Lane would need that same twenty-by-thirty fire truck space on Mansonita Road at the corner. Um, this, this residence, if it were to be built, does not go further into the setbacks. So it's not changing the width of Walsh Lane. So I'm not sure why that's the reason it is an issue, but it's good to see this on the plan. So maybe we can show that after when, get that technology figured out. Thank you.
There we go.
There it is. Okay, and so the plan is that, um, there will be an automatic sprinkler system. I understand that was part of the requirements, correct? Cara?
Um, yeah, sorry, I thought I, I thought I was unmuted and I was prattling on here. Sorry about that.
I remember that from the original, um, materials. Okay, well, thank you for, uh, doing that, Michelle and Cara.
Yeah. The, the, um, condition fourteen on the resolution is the one that requires the fire sprinklers, so.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right, um, anyone else with questions? I have just a couple. Oh, John, go for it. Sorry.
Sure, um, yeah, I'm sorry for not asking a question like this before, but, um, when I visited the site, um, I believe it was number twenty-four Walsh Lane was pointed out as a comparable house, at least in terms of the roof line, um, you know, with that butterfly roof thing. And I, I didn't walk down there and look at the house, but I just saw it from the distance. But I am curious what I mean, and I know that a number of the other houses are relatively smaller in, in this number of square feet. Uh, and that's one of the questions that has come up. And I'm just wondering whether that, I mean, number seventy-six, number ten, number seventy are all relative, you know, around fifteen hundred square feet, thereabouts. What about at the end of the street? Is that? What, what size are those houses there? Are they fifteen hundred or are they twenty-five hundred?
The, the houses at the very end of this street?
Yeah.
Okay, let me look through the other staff report.
I, I think that's all in, in the staff report.
Yeah, I, I thought I remembered seeing it, but I couldn't find it when it is, there's a, it's a big, long thing, so.
Some of the planning commission staff reports, one of the staff reports has the sizes of all the houses. And I think the next largest house that's right next door is about a little more than nineteen hundred square feet, closer to two, two thousand. I don't know about houses beyond that, or maybe that was something in the applicant's materials, but I did see there was a chart showing the sizes of all the houses.
It, it's on page seven of the, um, August twentieth, two thousand twenty, staff, planning commission staff report. It has, there's a table showing the different homes and some comparable, um, just some of their sizes.
Seven, and it's.
So it, it shows.
And it's, yeah.
So ten Walshes, two thousand square feet, seventy-six Mansonitas, nineteen ninety. And the other ones are all smaller. I don't know if you go beyond that, would that changes, but just that.
What page are you on?
Page seven of the planning commission staff report for August twentieth.
Thank you.
And I think that includes the house you're talking about down at the end of the lane.
I see it, yeah. Yeah, nineteen ninety. And then fourteen seventy-two was the one that was.
Right.
And in the appeal, John, they provide a chart on the percent differences in the averages. I'm sure you saw that.
Yeah.
So that was twenty-one Walsh Lane. Okay, do we have, um, John, did you have more questions?
I do not.
Okay, um, I just, I just wanted to ask, just to kind of solidify this and clarify in my mind. If you could answer how much, uh, total square footage is being add, that added that is outside of the original footprint of the house? So if thirteen hundred and fifty-six, um, is the square footage being added in total, how much of that is outside of the original footprint?
So outside of the original footprint, you have the, um, the, um, if you look at the plans, um, it's, sorry, it's a little awkward.
No, I know.
Get this weird space I'm in right here, um.
About four fifty.
It's, it's also listed on page, uh, one of the staff report. It's, it's four hundred and six square feet. Uh, it's understood that the garage area is less than five hundred square feet, so it doesn't qualify as net countable square footage, but it's a total of four hundred and six square feet, as shown on the first page of the report for this meeting.
Okay.
So, so that's added on to the existing floor, and then the lower floor is going to get ninety-six square feet. And you could see, if you look at page A-one of the plans, where those additions are going to go, um, next to the home that are outside the existing home footprint.
Okay, great. And then, um, I, this is just kind of, I, I've now, just to disclose, I was there again yesterday looking, once I had all this information in my head, I wanted to visualize. So in visualizing, um, the, the height and the point that seems to be, you know, causing a lot of, um, a lot of, uh, concern is, is that thirty-one point five feet. I, I thought it was thirty-one point five, Cara, and not thirty-one ten. But nonetheless, can you just kind of see if you could paint a picture for us? So I know that it's only that southwest corner that's going to be thirty-one point five feet. So can you explain how that, how that looks? Because if you look at the rest of the roof line, the whole house is not going to bump up to thirty-one point five feet.
Um, so it, um, I mean, I don't, um, well, if you look at the plans, you can kind of see it, but it, maybe it's a little hard to visualize. Like, if you look at page, um, on page A three point one, you can kind of see how the lot slopes. If you look at the proposed south elevation, so that's where you're really seeing the biggest increase in height. It's where, um, that, you can, the garage is below, there's a deck on the second floor, and then the bedroom, the master bedroom is going to be up there. So that's, that's the largest height. And if you kind of look at, um, the proposed east elevation, it's harder to visualize because, um, you know, it's sort of like, you know, not two-dimensional, but, um, you can kind of, it's, it's, I don't know, if that does a very, if that helps you out, or if you're looking for something else, sort of a, a different type of explanation, or maybe Ben, do you have something to add?
Well, what I would say is where it gets about at least five feet of that height is because if you look at the existing ground area where the garage and upper floor are proposed to be added, um, facing ten Wal, Walsh, uh, the, the corner, that southeast, southwest corner drops away about five or six feet right at that corner. So there's kind of a leveled-out bench, and then it drops off. And you can see that when you look at the story poles at that corner, that where the story pole is located, the grade drops away. So it's probably twenty square feet of that is at that thirty-one-foot height. And then the rest is, you know, subtract five, five feet or so from that height. But it's, it's, it's by virtue of the topography dropping off suddenly right at that corner that you have that height.
But, um, I would think I would add, um, it's thirty-one feet, ten inches on the plan. It's not thirty-one five, Renee.
Oh, okay.
It's clear on the plan than it is in the staff report, but it's in these plans.
Okay, my mistake. Um, and then I just had one other question, um, and a little off-topic, but something that's really important to me is, um, so with Marin Municipal Water District requiring gray water, um, systems for all fifty percent remodels, has that been? has that been factored into this project at all?
It's in the, in the conditions.
So there's, I forgot to ask the applicant that, but I will do when we have a chance to ask them questions. I just wanted to see, because I didn't, I didn't see that, or perhaps I just didn't ask that when we went out.
Cara, I believe it was in the conditions of the planning commission resolution, correct?
Yeah, I'm looking for it right now, so.
It's definitely in there because I saw it.
So it's, let's see. Okay, so I'm looking at it and let me see if I can find it in this resolution.
Cara, I can also ask, ask the applicant, because as we open the public hearing, we'll ask them to to be available for questions from council.
Okay, and you know, if that, I'm looking through the conditions right now to see if, I'm pretty sure that was a condition of project approval. But, you know, if that's something that you would like added as an additional condition, we can easily do that.
No, I just found it. It is it is included in the planning commission, condition number twenty-six. Ordinance four twenty-nine requiring installation of gray water recycling system when practicable must be incorporated into the project building permit plans, or an exemption letter from the district must be provided to the town. So that would be a plan check item.
Okay, okay, great. And then just to just to make sure I understood, Cara, you did say that the code section that relates in this, in this project based on the non-conforming uses is code section seventeen point oh one six point oh four oh, correct?
Correct.
Just wanted to make sure. And that's really all I have. I've been asking questions a lot. So what we'll do at this point is go ahead and open the public hearing. So I'd like to open the public hearing and ask that the applicant, so that would be Laura and David to be available and to have Morgan Hall be available if council should have any questions. So we're not going to have any presentations from the applicant or appellant, as we've already had those presentations. But any questions from council, please? This is our time.
I guess I could ask one question that you just raised, Renee. So there is a condition in the planning commission resolution regarding gray water use. And I guess my ask is, there is some language about to the extent practicable. And I would ask the applicant if they intend to incorporate gray water systems into the plans. I had assumed that, but then I see that language that says extent practicable. So I would ask that question.
Okay, could we ask Laura to, to answer that?
Madam Mayor, this is Michelle Gardner, town clerk. Laura, can you raise your, ah, I see you. There.
Okay.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, hi, Laura.
Okay, hi. Yes, Barbara, how I, I'm familiar with this requirement, and I've had to, you know, respond to these, to this requirement on other projects. And how it's normally done is that there's a valve that's on the washing machine that then allows the, you know, the washing discharged then to go out into landscaping area. So I think there might be other waters, but other ways to do it, but that's the most typical way that it's done and how it satisfies the requirement on other projects I've done.
And so your plan is to do the same sort of thing if this project is approved?
Yes, yes.
Okay, did anyone else have any questions of applicant or appellant? John?
In regards to that, the washing machine diverter thing, I mean, I've seen that described as, you know, basically the minimum that you could do, something that doesn't require permits to do, that somebody can do on their own house. You know, kind of as a bare minimum thing, that you're trying to get some gray water onto landscaping. But I understand that there's more, you know, there are other things that you can divert and have other systems there. So was any thought given to that? Doing anything more, or have you done that on other projects, Laura?
Sorry.
Muted, yeah. Laura's muted, anyway.
Yes, I'm happy to discuss that requirement with the homeowner and the project team and find other ways that we can go above and beyond just the minimum requirements.
Yeah, I think that would, you know, especially now, you know, we're going into yet another drought sequence, and I think more than the minimum requirement would be a good idea. But that's a question, but, you know.
Yeah, we can come back to when we discuss. So council, any other questions of these guys? No. Okay, so seeing none, we are going to open it up for public comment. And we'll ask who should tell to, to see who's got their hands up and invite people to speak.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. Right now, there are two hands up. One is a phone number, the first one. The phone number ends in seven oh six, followed by Lynn Yetter. So the phone caller you're on, you have to unmute your phone.
Yes, hi, I'm opposed to this. Oh, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. If you don't mind stating your name.
Pardon me?
If you don't mind, could you state your name? If you don't want to, that's okay, too.
Yeah, I'm Sherab Bogan.
Oh, hi, Sherab.
Hi, hi, I live at ten Walsh Lane.
Yeah.
I'm opposed to this house. I feel like this house would be the furthest thing imaginable from fitting in with the neighborhood. It's going to look like a large office building. I still feel like the parking and backing out will be a nightmare with so many bedrooms. There'll probably be a lot of cars, if not immediately, then sooner or later, in tandem parking. There's no, there's no parking on our block, and there's very little parking out on the road either. So I don't, I don't know how that could be accomplished, shuffling all those cars around, particularly at eight-thirty in the morning on a weekday. I, I, you know, our neighborhood averages two or three bedrooms. We've done the math. How can you legitimize five bedrooms in our miniscule little lane? I just feel like it's all out of proportion, and this project just feels like it flaunts all the precedents. And if this gets built, then it opens the door for other houses that look like large office buildings. I just feel like it's a terrible precedent for future buildings. And I, I'm not understanding why a liar has been paid, it must be at least a thousand dollars by now, to fight. But we're a citizens coalition, you know, there are a lot of us. It's not like we're one individual. I, I just, you know, I would need Morgan to talk about the codes, but it just feels like the town is willing to abandon its own codes. And it seems that the liar wasn't fully aware of what she was talking about. She's a liar. She's not an architect. But I'll let Morgan talk about that when it's his turn. Let's see, I guess that's all I have to say. It just makes me terribly sad to think about this going in in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Sherab. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Lynn Yetter, followed by Frank Egger, followed by Christoph Bessler. Lynn?
Yeah.
Oh, there you are.
Hi, Lynn Yetter. I just want to say tonight, I'd like you guys to read the IJ because Mill Valley is reviewing its accessory dwelling unit regulations to determine if it can create local controls to ensure density does not increase in fire-prone areas. Thirty-three percent of the parcels there are in high-risk areas. I'd like to know what ours are in Fairfax. They limit, there's eight hundred square feet. I think Fairfax did a huge number of twelve. Why isn't Fairfax fighting for us in that regard? As far as six Walsh Lane, it's got a lot of problems. It could be a trend, and I think is moving that way because I have the wall private gated community coming up across the street from where I live. So this town was built with small homes, not large homes, because they don't fit. The town is built in canyons, narrow roads, and low lands. I want Fairfax to stop the overbuild, stop increasing square footage of existing homes. It makes one less home for a senior, a couple, a small family. We don't need five-bedroom house everywhere. It's ridiculous. Building a five-bedroom home eliminates housing for the above groups. If homes keep getting increased square foot, it opens to the door for every home to do it. The roads in Fairfax are narrow, crowded with parked cars. People don't always use their garages and driveways, and apparently there's no way to enforce that they do that, to get their cars off the road. Exiting in emergency situations are dangerous. Homes were built with one or two cars on the property originally. So I want Fairfax to wake up, because people are going to start going back to work, believe it or not. The traffic will be horrendous. It's already started. A lot of people have moved here since March. Mill Valley, Larkspur, Kentfield, I think they've all just said no to the accessory buildings in high areas. So it just breaks my heart in that you guys are paying, or the town is paying lawyers. We pay property tax. That money to pay those lawyers is coming out of our property tax. So those four people on Walsh Lane are having to pay to have lawyers chase them. It's heartbreaking. And if you've been here for generations, this is not the Fairfax that we love. I mean, and it's kicking out generations of people that have been here. I'm sorry, it's wrong. So no more overbuild. You buy a house that's two thousand square feet, you leave it that way. You can rebuild it within that dimension, but stop increasing the square footage and the footprint. Because a lot, we need to have a model of a computer of everybody in their homes. And then there's an emergency, and somebody show all the cars trying to leave at the same time to get out of the valleys, the canyons, and the small roads at Deer Park. It's horrific. That's it. I'm just, I'm so disappointed in the planning and the town council for not fighting because I feel it on the wall property. That's not getting pushed back hard enough either. Thank you. Good night. Happy holiday.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Frank Egger, followed by Christoph Bessler. Frank, you're unmuted. You'll need to unmute yourself.
How about that?
We hear you.
There we go. Frank Egger, Metaway, speaking for, say, Fairfax. Good evening, council members. I urge you approve the appeal and deny the application for six Walsh Lane without prejudice to allow the applicant to reapply within one year with an application for a smaller structure and the paving of the private road from Manzanita to the southerly boundary of six Walsh Lane. No new application fee would be required. The Fairfax staff and town attorney give you no options. Why are they working against the neighborhood? Why do they reject out of hand the appeal? The town council needs to approve basic findings this evening. One, the project needs a variance because the combined side yard setbacks, neither side less than five feet, and combined twenty-foot setback is not met, and the combined front and rear setbacks, thirty-five feet. But the project only has twenty-nine feet, so the structure goes from fifteen hundred and ten feet to thirty-two hundred square feet. That's with the garage. The purpose and intent of the nineteen seventy-three zoning ordinance, number three fifty-two, is misstated by the town attorney. How do I know? I made the motion to adopt Fairfax's nineteen seventy-three zoning ordinance. The prior ordinance, number two thirty, required at least five feet of side yard setbacks on either side of any house. The structure did not meet the code at the time it was built. The fire department can require stricter conditions, but cannot reduce town code requirements. The private road ordinance is ignored. We adopted the private road ordinance in nineteen seventy-eight, requiring new houses built on a private road to have twenty feet of usable roadway. Why did we adopt that law? A house fire on a tiny private road off of Bothin, off of Bothin Road created firefighting problems for the Fairfax Fire Department. The code requires a new or fifty percent remodel structure to be built on a road of not less than twenty foot wide. Walsh Lane is eight to ten feet wide. Evacuation for the six homes on Walsh Lane below number six would be almost impossible if a fire broke out at number six. Fairfax's implied immunity from liability for errors and omissions will not stand if residents are severely injured or die because they could not evacuate because Fairfax has been made aware of the issue before any action. If Fairfax council members met privately with the applicants, it may well create ex parte meeting issues and preclude any council member who met with the developer for voting on the application this evening. According to town records, the applicant's architect was a member of the Fairfax Planning Commission while she processed the application from the end of twenty nineteen to July of twenty twenty, when she left the planning commission. This is a five-bedroom, four-bath spec house and could have an additional two units added, an accessory dwelling unit, and a junior accessory dwelling unit in the future. Only three planning commissioners voted for the approval. There's seven members on the commission, only three voted for the approval of the application. So a minority of the commission voted for approval. Fairfax has not approved a new home on a gravel or dirt road in forty years. I urge approval of the appeal and denial of the cap application without prejudice. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Frank. Next speaker, please.
Yes, the next speaker is Christoph Bessler. I've unmuted you, Christoph.
Okay, you hear me, I guess?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so I'm totally fascinated by the whole thing. This is a wonderful, amazing exercise in civic life to me, that I can participate here happily or not so happily. So I was participating in three meetings so far. And it blows my mind how many people came to these meetings and spoke up. As you know, Walsh Lane is really a small lane. There are a couple of people living here. And as you witness here, all these people come and participate in the meeting and put in their five cents. Now, it's not just Morgan Hall who lives next door to the house in question, who has a problem with it. And not just Anne Frye, who lives on the other side, who has problems as a nurse with the sleeping. Every single one, one hundred percent, on the lane here, not one single person is not speaking up and telling town of Fairfax that this is not working for us. There are people coming up to our place from uphill There are people coming up to our place from uphill, from downhill, but everywhere they're coming and say, what's going on? We heard these things. And every single one walks away and says like, this is not right. We all speak up. We all represent the town because we're living here since many, many years. And everybody here speaks to you, the town council. So you as the town council, I hope, listen to us townspeople. And we all, again, one hundred percent of us, say the same thing. We speak as one and we don't really want that. Now, for myself, I have to say, I'm an amateur. I don't know the codes and all these things that almost overwhelms me. And most of people of us on the lane, we just really are amateurs other than really Morgan, right? But none of us living on the lane, again, like for many, many, many decades, none of us ever was in front of the town council and had a problem with anything that got built in our neighborhood. There were many projects around. Nobody ever thought it was something we had to oppose. We live here since twenty, thirty, fifty years and never, ever did we have an issue like this. And we never needed to put an appeal in, ever. I'm also not a lawyer, so I can't explain to you when a basement is a basement or not, or when a bedroom is a bedroom, when it's livable space or not. To me, a bedroom is a bedroom, period. But I understand that from that process. There is a design review. And the design review says the building has to fit in the neighborhood. Now, let me tell you, we all agree it doesn't. And I very, very much hope and really expect from you guys or from the planning commissioner's case that I will hear tonight an argument that tells me why what is in the design review is okay. It has to fit. And I'm telling you, when I talk to my eighth graders or fifth graders or even third graders, and I'm telling them which number does not fit in that sequence, point eighteen, point twenty-five, point twenty-one, point sixteen, and point forty, guess which one doesn't fit in there? And you can do the same thing with all the other numbers that are in our appeal. Fifteen hundred, nineteen hundred, fourteen hundred, twenty-four hundred. Guess what, which one doesn't fit in? And I want an answer from whoever is supposed to give me the answer. What's going on with that? It's not okay. And lastly, before I go away, yeah, just one more sentence. I want to just throw out the word compromise. Compromise, I'd be happy with a compromise. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Bert Barge, followed by Pamela Miggs, followed by Larry Bragman. So actually Valerie, I'm sorry. Valerie Hood, you're unmuted.
Oh, thank you, Michelle. So so far, I hear no one on the council advocating in any way for existing residents. That really surprises me. The report says that the tree committee has not been to the property, but I'm wondering if anyone in the audience is on the tree committee and if they've been up there, if they have anything to say about it. I'd really like to hear from the tree committee. I'm really glad that Frank brought up the problem of fire evacuation. And I've driven up to Walsh Lane and I know how narrow that is. And I know how hard it is going to be to evacuate that. Just like the Cascades, just like the areas around Frustuck and above, there are so many places that are going to be so difficult. And I guess that sort of brings up the problem of our, if we ever returned any of the money to the police departments, we have money for fire evacuation. And then I'd really like to hear from Walsh Lane residents about their fears about fire evacuation in that neighborhood. I think that's a pretty essential thing. I mean, we just came out of a time where we had fires to the north, south, east, and west of us. And we never knew from one minute to the next if the fire might spread here. And now we have a little bit of rain and we can sort of pretend that fire danger is over. But of course, it's not. If you dig down, as I have as a landscaper, less than half an inch, it's dry as a bone. This water has done nothing, nothing at all. And we have so many trees down, all over this town, all over the watershed. We are not out of fire danger here, not at all. If we have a fire storm, if we have a storm that has lightning, we could be set off at any minute. And there's a lot of stuff on the ground right now that's very dry. So I think we really need to pay attention to this. And I think the council is very much responsible for this at this time. You guys really have to take this into consideration. We're way overbuilt. We still haven't properly assessed our actual residents in this town. Our town for years has had a sign that says we're at seventy-five-hundred. But that's not what the real estate people say. They say we're well over nine thousand people. Now, that's going to affect how much we are supposed to build in this town. We're already overbuilt from my perspective. And I think Frank's point about the fact that there may be grandfather units and stuff added to this spec home down the line, that's kind of a big deal. And also just the offensive, the offensive structure that it does look like, you know, a warehouse or something instead of a home. I think that should be taken into consideration. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Pam Miggs, followed by Larry Bragman.
Okay. Hey, good evening, everyone. I've already spoke on this, but I'm just going to reiterate a couple of things. First of all, visualize yourself being in these neighbor shoes and you living in your little quaint house for thirty-something years, forty-something years. And all of a sudden, you've got a neighbor who is demanding to have this monster home and how it's going to affect the neighborhood, especially a next door. So I mean, it's just pretty painful to listen to those neighbors and what they're experiencing. This is way, way off target. So I think the attorney has not talked about the character. And I know I'm one that really drills character because I worked on the general plan for ten years. And that is what Fairfax is. We thrive, we love, we don't want to change the character. So letting this go through will change the character and will open the door, like the other neighbor said. It'll create a precedent. So anybody in Fairfax, you know? So I really see the downplay on not talking about character. And also, I noticed that from the planning department. They're not talking about character. So you have the right to not accept this plan based on character. That is a definite legitimate no vote. And you will have a finding on that. So last, just think about, why did you move here? Why did those neighbors move here? So I'm just going to leave it at that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Pam. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Larry Bragman, followed by Sandra Stamos, followed by Rick Hamer. So Larry, you're unmuted now.
Okay, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. So I'd like to reiterate and emphasize what Pam said about design review. That really hasn't been addressed in the staff report. And that may be because it's more subjective and discretionary and clearly within your discretion to make findings. And if you really look at this house, I mean, it's just maxed out entirely. I mean, there's not one square foot that wasn't taken advantage of. And that includes the ninety-three square feet in the lower level that is left unfinished. Well, if you look at the FAR ordinance, there's no exemption for unfinished floor area. So, you know, I don't really think that takes it out of the floor area ratio calculation. And if you add that back in, it's over the FAR. The way this has been designed, it maxes out everything. But in order to do so, it's got these two subtractions of that so-called unfinished area of almost a hundred square feet plus the stairs. Well, those are not exceptions under our code. Second thing, as far as procedure, I disagree with the town attorney's interpretation of the enlargement of the non-conforming use. In this case, it's not just the setbacks that are non-conforming. It's the entire structure is a non-conforming structure. So how can you say that you can increase a non-conforming structure without getting a variance? I mean, that just sort of seems like intellectual sophistry to me. Last point I want to make is that a variance is required in this case because of the second story that's been added. If you look, there's more than one section in the town code that addresses non-conforming uses and the expansion of non-conforming uses. And it's not just in seventeen point oh-six-oh-four-oh. If you look at seventeen point oh-two-eight point one-three-oh, what it says is, "The alteration of an existing structure which does not increase the discrepancy between existing conditions and any site standard, even though present conditions on the site do not conform with the regulations for the district in which the site is located, provided, provided that the alteration is in compliance with seventeen point oh-one-six, which is what we've already discussed." And this is what I want to emphasize. And provided that the alteration is not a second-story addition. Well, in this case, there is a second-story addition. There's a four-hundred-square-foot second-story addition. And it requires a variance under seventeen point oh-two-eight point one-three-oh B. So I think, you know, on a design review and procedural basis, you've got authority to approve the appeal. I think you should approve the appeal. I think it sets a very dangerous precedent. And, you know, I think everything in the record is there to back up accepting this appeal. This should go back to the planning commission for a variance and reconsideration. So thanks a lot for hearing me out.
Okay, thank you, Larry. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Sandra Stamos, followed by Rick Hamer. Sandra, you're unmuted.
Am I unmuted now?
Yes, we hear you.
Oh, hi. My husband and I just live around the corner and we, like Pam, worry a lot about fire. We walked up there today because we do kindly get the notices from the town council, what's going on and everything. So we're always up there hiking and we never dreamed a house that size would be going in on that corner. We happened to run into a neighbor and looked at it and just went, oh my God, this cannot happen. And Larry sounds very knowledgeable. And we just want to add our two cents to, please approve a...
Yeah, my name is Martin, I'm her husband. And I would like to say that I'm really concerned about cars, the number of cars that will eventually need to park there. Because in our little area, four of the nine houses in this particular area have become multiple-use houses. And so when we moved here, there were just, you know, a couple in each house, more or less, maybe one with kids. But now, with as many people living there as possible...
There's probably five cars per house.
Yes, and this house, this structure may end up with five cars. Plus, the unfinished part, which everybody likes to finish, might be two more bedrooms. And so you'll have perhaps seven cars or maybe more. So I think that has to be taken into consideration.
We have to go and be at a police that there's twelve feet in between cars. You know, people can't get through here half the time.
Yeah, we find people blocking the street and so the fire trucks can't get through and we have to...
We have to put signs, we have to do all kinds of stuff. We are the neighborhood police for parking. And I don't want to have to walk up to Walsh Lane and be the same. It's just like, but that would be our way out. That's our, that's our way to get out of Dodge, should we have to. And we've already had to evacuate twice. So we know what that feels like. You can't get past the fire trucks on Frustuck. You have to go up to Manzanita and over. It's just, it's a nightmare. I just do not want to see, you know, heavier traffic up there. That would really be a problem.
Yeah, I'm going to say, I have a neighbor who won't talk to me because I went to tell her that her car was blocking other cars that wanted to get up the hill. So I just think that is a big problem. So we would like to ask you, please approve. Please do not approve your appeal.
Do approve.
Do approve your appeal, sorry.
We're new, but we know that this has been going on for a while. So we're just adding our voices.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Rick Hamer, followed by Mark Bell. Rick, you're unmuted.
Good evening, council. This project has sure become a poster child to rally behind for voters to vote about changing our zoning rules. For one, maybe we should think about having this design review forward back because we've heard plenty of reasons why this project doesn't fit. And I would think that it's, we've heard enough to say it might be prudent to send this project, this outsider project, back to the drawing board. It's about money, it's not about public opinion. And I'm saying that as a voter here in Fairfax. Thank you very much.
Okay, Rick, thank you.
The next speaker is Mark Bell. You're unmuted.
Hi, it's actually Ling Chen Bell. Hi, I just wanted to support what all these people have been saying is that it's really important to try to maintain the character of the town of Fairfax and not have these really big houses built. And obviously, for the neighborhood, they're totally against it. And please take that in consideration. So I just wanted to give my support to the people who live up there. And please don't let these huge houses come in because it's true that it sets a precedent for future people to do the same. And we don't really want to go there. This is a really special place, as we all know. So please keep it that way. Thanks.
Thank you, Ling Chen. Next speaker, please.
Madam Mayor, I do not see any more speakers. If you wish to close the public hearing?
I'm not going to close it quite yet because there may be...
There is one more now.
Oh, well, I wasn't going to say it for that, but this is good, just in time. So let's let that next speaker speak, please.
Okay, Karen, you're unmuted.
Thank you. You know, I want to start off by saying that as I listened to this whole thing that's been going on, I was wondering why I'm confused. And I think I'm confused because I can't understand why this town seems to be so interested in keeping this project. You know, we've listened to all these different people. I wonder if I missed something. Here we are, a sizable number of neighbors. And we want to say, we just think that this will change Walsh Lane forever, as well as Fairfax. And we all know the normal, it doesn't fit the character of the lane. We all know that. But I want to say, for me... for me, as voters, we elected a number of people on the boards because we loved your promises of keeping Fairfax as Fairfax. We love the idea of retaining the qualities of things that make us special. So why are we having the change? Why is there no dialogue, no compromise? Why is it that all these neighbors here, who have lived through numerous, and I want to say numerous, changes? We've never complained. Ann's house, built over the top. The people on the hill, built over the top. We never say anything. And why? Because it fit in. But here, what really surprises me is that nobody has brought up the compromise of how do we make this house fit in, these neighbors fit in? So I think my closing thing is, I just want to say, I am so impressed by the facts that come out from all these people, much smarter than me. But I want to close with the fact that when people talk about every single detail of a code, knowing that the majority of us sitting here don't understand it, I feel like it's kind of like a phone company bill. If it's too detailed to understand, there's a reason. So what I want to say is, we've all come together, we've all spent money, we really don't have to blow. And my question is, if we elected you as keeping Fairfax as Fairfax, do you really think that this is the way to go? Isn't there a compromise for all of us? Really? Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Next is Kay Mahoney Neal, followed by Morgan Hall. So Kay Mahoney Neal, you're unmuted.
Hi, everyone. This is my first time ever attending or speaking. I am a Marin County native. I've lived here 56 of my 58 years. And I've heard a lot of people talk about keeping Fairfax Fairfax. And as someone who's lived here, it's, Fairfax has already changed drastically, you know, and this three, I mean, this is almost double the square footage of what is up there now. And that just seems so over the top and excessive. And it's like Kentfield or Lurksburg, what happened in Lurksburg. And I just, and I actually live in this neighborhood. And it's not just the neighborhood that I'm concerned about. It's, it's not, it's just, it's just so excessive and, you know, compromise, 2,000 square feet. That's all I have to say. Thanks, you guys.
Okay, thank you.
Next speaker, sorry. The next speaker is Morgan Hall, the appellant. Morgan, you're unmuted.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you, Morgan.
Hi, hi, everybody.
Hi.
Let's see, I, what can I say? It's, let's just say it's, it's, we've gone to a great deal of effort, I think, to try to clarify some of the issues that were so confusing a meeting or so ago. And now, we've got the town attorney involved in looking at what that, what the town attorney has said. That person has done nothing but just the opposite, is making an effort to muddy the waters. The first issue about the, the front rear setbacks don't meet what's supposed, they're supposed to, they're 29 feet. They're supposed to be 35, and the side yard setbacks often. We questioned, we said, like, you shouldn't be able to raise the house because the house contains those setbacks that are deficient. And we're told that height has nothing to do with it. And that the, the increase supposedly that's required, shouldn't exist, the increase in the discrepancy is not affected by height. And it should be, I think she said, there should be a further incursion of the particular problem with the setback. Well, it says nothing like that. It simply says, the discrepancy can't be increased. Take the example of, say you've got a house that's, exists now, it's 24 feet long, but it's 40 feet tall. And it, it, it's too tall. And you decide to make that 24-foot-long house 48 feet. Can you say that because the height's the problem, or not a problem, that you can't, you shouldn't be able to do that? Well, it's, it's increasing the discrepancy between what exists and what should exist. So that logic about the setbacks just does not hold water. Secondly, there's the matter of calling the basement, defining it, and it's, I think it, it's, the attorney has tried to say that, you know, we don't count floor area, or we haven't counted floor area because, and the terms that are used are habitable space, living space. Nowhere have I used that term. It's floor area, pure and simple, that's it. It has nothing to do with habitable or not. And even if it's unconditioned and unfinished, the county has a clause that says it doesn't, even if it is unfinished, even if it is unconditioned, it still counts as floor area. I could quote your chapter and verse, but that's in the county development code. So because the logic held that's held by the attorney is faulty, the conformity should, has, has to be counted that's down in the basement. And by counting that, it puts the FAR over the top. The elevation to the house on sheet eight, 3.0, the west elevation clearly shows a two-story building. There's no basement there whatsoever. If you look at the county assessor's records, you'll see a sketch that is done by the inspector, probably sometime in the early 70s. And if you look closely, it shows a two-story building. The two floors plans are superimposed in slightly different ink, but it shows the upper level of, I think it's 1,464, and it shows a lower level of, I'm trying to remember, 400 or 500 square feet. So it's clearly two levels. Now, if you look at a record of the inspections by the assessor, because in the old days before Prop 13, they'd come by all the time and reassess you. Well, the house had a fire in 68 and the owner got a permit to rebuild it. And you look and you'll see that the county assessor went out time after time after time to check the job to see if it was complete, and it was not. And finally, in 1984, the county gave up. So the permit was never filed. And essentially, the, the existence of that lower level wasn't really recognized by the records of the county because it was never filed. So to take, to try to take the fact that the lower level didn't exist on the county's paperwork to confirm the fact that the basement didn't exist, so you don't have to count the floor area, is fallacious. The floor area is there, it should be counted. When counted, it puts the FAR over the required point four.
Morgan, Morgan, I'm, I'm sorry to cut you off, but we need to keep this consistent with everyone. Thank you very much for all the information. Okay. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Deborah Benson, and, and yes, you're unmuted.
Thank you, Michelle. Deborah Benson, Fairfax. All of this talk about setbacks and height limits, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, does not take into account the parts or ordinance that have to do with design review, which means that if this place doesn't fit into the neighborhood, you all have the right to say no to it without, without threat of litigation. And, and allowing these, these mega-structures to be built into our neighborhoods out of character is going to change Fairfax forever. So please say no to this. In order for this, this structure to be built, almost 300 cubic yards of Fairfax have to be taken out. And at the beginning of the town council meetings, you all have made a statement saying that we're living on seeded lands. And I would like to read something from a Native American, Smohalla, Awanapan prophet to that point. "It is not right to tear up and mutilate the earth as the white men do. You ask me to plow the ground. Shall I take a knife and tear my mother's bosom? Then when I die, she will not take me to her bosom to rest. You ask me to dig for stone, shall I dig under her skin for bones? Then when I die, I cannot enter her body to be born again. You ask me to cut grass and make hay and sell it and be rich like the white man, but how dare I cut off my mother's hair? We simply take the gifts that are freely offered. We no more harm the earth than would an infant's fingers harm its mother's breast. But the white man tears up large tracts of land, runs deep ditches, cuts down the forest, and changes the whole face of the earth. Every honest man in his heart knows that is wrong." And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Deborah. Next speaker, please.
I don't see any new speakers. I do see that Laura Carline has raised her hand again. I'm not sure.
Yeah, again? Have we heard from, has she spoken?
Oh, maybe not. Maybe just when you asked your questions at the beginning.
Questions, we did not, she did not get to speak.
All right, then I will call on her. Laura, you're unmuted.
Yes, I mean, I wanted, we wanted to object because we thought the rules were that we weren't going to be allowed to speak. So when the appellant spoke, we felt like we needed to have a chance to be able to speak ourselves. So anyway, town staff has reviewed and verified the existing conditions, and the project's been designed to meet the town zoning codes. It provides parking where none exists. It provides a fire-safe structure. All of, all of the claims referred to by the applicant, the appellant are repetitive, baseless, and without merit. The trustee for the property and representatives respectfully request that the town council review the facts presented to you in the staff report and the town attorney's memo, and deny the appeal and uphold the previous decision of the planning commission approving the project. I think that we've been able to answer all your questions. I mean, I put a lot of thought and care into the design, making sure that it met all, all of the, all of the requirements. I think people start, keep going over the size. Yeah, I mean, I've been a resident of Fairfax for 28 years, and I keep on hearing all this speculation that we're ruining the town and all that. I mean, I don't feel that way at all. I feel very proud of this design. I've worked really hard to try to, to, to give my client what she needs and for her family, the space that she needs for her, for her brother and for her two children. And, and so she's anxious to be able, to be able to move here and be a part of the Fairfax community, which is, which, which she, she loves, even with the opposition that she's, she's been getting from her neighbors. So she's, she's anxious to be able to, be able to do her remodeling and be able to move into the community. So, anyway, we'd just like to be able to put that out there.
Okay, thank you, Laura. Anyone else, Michelle?
I do not see any other speakers at this time, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so now I would like to close the public hearing and bring it back to, to council for discussion. And we've just learned a lot. And so I would like to ask who might like to start. Barbara.
Yeah, so I want to thank everybody for coming out and also, I think I pointed out before, I sat on the planning commission with both Morgan Hall and Laura Carline, and respect them both very much. I also want to point out that at the last meeting, there were issues raised that were kind of new and we do not have the answers, hence the continuance. And so my concern is some folks saying, the lawyer and all of this, we specifically asked for those questions to be answered, and that is why we received that. And it's not about, with the way I read it, and maybe it's my view, it was objective. So I think that was very helpful for some of those issues that were raised last time. I think some of the issues that came up tonight is there, which I kind of take exception to, is a meeting with the applicants on the behalf of council members, by council members meeting with the applicants. Well, it's not, and we all that did meet with the applicant disclosed that. So there's no need to recuse, and that was just an objective review on my part to really see the house and really understand it better. Because it's not easy to do on plants, especially because a lot of it was inside. Also, there was an issue raised about Laura Carline being on the planning commission when she was working on these plans. I sat on the planning commission with other architects, including Morgan Hall, who brought applications at the time. That is not a conflict, and basically, the planning commissioner must recuse when it is their project. And so that's standard. It's different than those of us on the council. I also took a look at, Larry Bragman has raised some issues, another person I respect very well, about 17.028.130, which he points to, these are exemptions under B, where he points to saying that this, this points to the need for a variance. And I've got my code in front of me, so I've been following along and trying rapidly to read because I haven't memorized it yet. But I will say this, is that I see nothing in there that says, in fact, if anything, it fortifies the exemption. So I don't see that piece. I also want to say, when I sat on the planning commission, initially, there was a separate design review board. And I was very opposed at the time to consolidating the design review with the planning commission. And I believe at that time, I talked to Larry Bragman, and I believe another council member who voted against the incorporation. And my, my reason for not doing that was my concern was that we would have so many architects on our planning commission. And I think architects really lend a lot to the planning commission, but we don't want that to be everyone that's on the planning commission. We want to look at the variety of factors, some of the issues that came up tonight. So I paid attention to what happened at the planning commission, and I believe design review was followed. I think it's a matter- review was followed. I think it's a matter of uh, different views. I know the color of the house that's proposed are the same colors for the changes that's happening to Canyon Village after, I don't know, what is it, 40, 50 years? They're finally changing the colors of Canyon Village, and it looks the same to me. And to me, that's a good change. I want to also remind those of us that were on the council before, that we went through many discussions of changing the maximum house size. And I don't know how many meetings we had on that, and I'm not sure if we did that before Stephanie was on the council. I think it was before Stephanie was on the council. But we'd spent a lot of meetings, and Councilmember Reed brought that to us. And we finally arrived at 3,500 as being the maximum house size. So I also, when I walked and saw that house that exists there now, that house, in my view, and I'm not the only one, it's a fire hazard. It's also, when you look at that foundation in the unfinished area, it looks to me like a pretty significant ring could cause that house to roll down the hill, injuring folks. So I personally think that house, in its current state, I'm not sure how the person who lived there before was able to do it, but I understand it was an older gentleman who lived there for a number of years. But it's kind of a blight on that neighborhood. So my view is that design review was followed. Also, that whether we have concerns or not, the house size is well within the limitations that we placed, going back to the 3,500 as being max, which some may argue is way too large, but we went through many meetings on that. And I do think my look at the design and the pictures seem that it's going to improve the area. But I just wanted to bring up some of those points, and I've been going through the code, and I probably have a little more experience with it than others of you for this area, since I did sit on the planning commission. But I see that one of the things that seems to be, again, lost in the shuffle is it's legal nonconforming, as long as you don't make it worse. Your grandfather did. So what I see is they're staying within the legal nonconforming setbacks. They're within the height limit. That space in downstairs, which is the crumbling foundation with the water running through it, and probably a lot of paths going through it, is unfinished area. So I do not believe it increases the far, and I don't think it counts towards the far. And while I know some in the area may not like this house, I also think, I want to remind folks, when we looked at the plan, everybody in the area is going to be relying on that Manzanita Walsh Lane corner for any fire trucks. I don't see this house adding to anything that already exists there as fire, as far as fire issues, because that's where the fire trucks have to be today, or if this house goes forward. It's not changing that dynamic. So I personally do not live up in the hills, and every time I go up in the hills, I worry, and that's one of the reasons we did those evacuation maps. But when we live in these areas, it's, it's going to be very difficult to get out regardless. So those are just some of the points I wanted to make, trying to follow what people were saying. And thank you for listening.
Okay, thanks, Barbara. John?
Yeah, I mean, I could, just during the, I was on the council when we combined the planning commission and the design review board. And basically, what was driving that was California law and the California law stating that it needed, somebody has to go through that approval process in a certain finite amount of time. And if it took longer than that, which are having it go through both of those, and sometimes you would have to look at the design before you go to the planning commission, or, or if you do it after, it's, it's, it's already done. You know, that, that the process was imperfect at best. But what with the streamlining requirements of California law, that pretty much drove the decision there in terms of combining that. And there's some, there's some problems with combining it. There are some advantages in combining it, too, in that the decision process is interwoven, if you will, with all the different decisions and discussion that needs to be made. So I, I think that design review encompasses a lot of different things. One of the things is, is, is the character of the house and how it fits into the neighborhood. There, there's no question that this house is currently in a very dilapidated set, state. I mean, the, the, I don't know if the roof's bad or not, but it looks like it could be, you know, or has been in the past. Certainly down in the foundation of the basement, I mean, the water just pours through those cracks in the foundation, and you can see it bulging out. You know, and if somebody's interested in, you know, trying to, you know, buy a house that needs a lot of work, you know, you do the foundation and you do the changes that allow you to increase the capacity of the house, which obviously these people are, the, the applicants are looking to do, that's the kind of house you buy. I mean, it's not, you know, you know, you need to improve something to make it there. But I guess what I have a problem with is it's pretty much maxed out. I mean, it's, you know, 39.96% far, you know, the way it's calculated is pretty close to 40. And you know, lots of, I mean, Laura has, basically, the, the architect has done the work that's been asked of her, and she's done a good job at trying to stay within the way the law is written to maximize this house size. And pretty much, she's gotten as much, you know, blood out, you could get out of this turnip, you know, which is commendable, if, if that's your objective. I guess the problem that I have with it is that it's a lot bigger than the other houses on this street. And the street is 10 feet wide, and there's not, there's not going to be any on street, 10 foot wide street, because that's what you need to get, I mean, you need more than that, really, to get a fire truck down there, which is why there's a zone on Manzanita marked out for the fire truck to operate from. It's a tight spot. And I think that that really should be taken into account. You know, it's, it's more than just exactly how the code is written and whether you're complying with the code exactly. I mean, I think that it, on the face of it, it appears that it does comply with all the words in the code. But what it doesn't seem to apply to, in my estimation here, is that this is a 10-foot-wide private land road, in effect. And there's a, a lot of houses, you know, crowded along it, all of which are relatively small compared to the average size, and which is what our rules are written around. So you know, it's, it, I don't think it is a big, I, you know, the fire risk is improved compared to the other houses on that street, because of sprinklers, among other things, and also, it's closer to the fire plug. It's a tight spot for all of those houses, and I can understand the neighbors' concerns for, you know, numbers of cars being parked there. I guess the height of it certainly appears high, especially if you look from the down, you know, that, that corner that drops way down the hill, which unfortunately for Morgan Hall is right towards his house. So of course, it seems really big from that angle. I guess, yeah, how it looks and feels is a part of, you know, what would ordinarily come up with design review. You know, how the code is written, yes, it complies, but how it worked, since, doesn't seem, you know, not so much. So that's, at least, probably, I'm happy to go around again later, add some more comments when I hear what other people say, but that's my initial statement there.
Okay. Thanks, John. Stephanie?
You're muted.
I said I have lots of thoughts. Thank you, Barbara and John. So I guess the first thing I want to start with is what Mr. Larry Bragman raised, and I also brought up the code. So I, Barbara, I'd like to chat about this briefly, if we could, because, you know, you know, this section B says here, it clearly says here, the, if the alteration is not a second story. So what do you make of that? Or maybe Janet, you want to, you want to comment on that? "The alteration of an existing structure which does not increase the discrepancy between existing conditions and any site standard, even though present conditions on the site do not conform with the regulations for the district in which the site is located, provided that the alteration is in compliance with the provisions of chapter 17.016 of this title, and provided that the alteration is not a second story addition." Do you not think that applies here?
I think it is in conformance with 17. 1716040. I'm sorry. Did, were you asking Barbara, or are you asking me? Because I was going to also ask Kara or Ben if they'd like to chime in, too. But yes, I see this section, and I see it as being in conformance with the section of the code that, let me pull it up here, that I was talking about, which is 17.016.040. So I think it is in conformance with that. I don't view it as a second story. I don't view it as a new window or door into a substandard side yard. Let me pull up.
You don't, you don't view what as a second story?
The, the addition that's going in.
So I think, I think what is, is proposed is the bottom story, not, not the second. I mean, the, so if you read that, it says, "And provided that the alteration is not a second story addition, or does not involve a new window or door opening in a wall facing a substandard side or rear yard, and provided that the property does not have nonconforming parking." So in my view, it's not a second story addition. The addition is proposed in the first story.
If I may, that garage with a, a master bedroom above it is all a proposed addition and
That's not a second story, though.
Yeah, but it's a garage with a bedroom over it. That's two-story structure.
I mean, it's non-inhabitable. It's going to habitable. It's an additional story.
But it's also an existing, already existing second story, even if the lower is uninhabitable. It's an addition to the second story, but it's not a second story addition. And these are things I would have to ask planning to chime in on.
Well, I believe that the addition, the, the moving area over the garage is a second story. However, if you look at the applicable code standards that are in play, and I would probably need to research this a little bit more, but I think that the front and rear combined setback is not problematic for that addition. The combined side, I'd have to check. It's, it's one of those situations where you look at the nonconforming chapter 17016, and as our analysis indicates, we believe that it is consistent with that. This provision, it's, it's a little bit more challenging, because obviously, there's some interpretation.
Okay. So just a couple of points I want to respond on. And first, I just want to thank everyone who's worked on this stuff. I know this has been a lot of work on you. And Janet, thank you for the memo you wrote. And for everyone that showed up tonight, and the group of neighbors, and the architect Laura, I know this has been a lot. So thank you. Um, as far as the, the, the fire department, I, I don't, I don't feel comfortable, you know, debating the, the fire, you know, whether the fire, the fire department has signed off on this. So I don't feel comfortable debating that issue. What I feel very uncomfortable with is the matter of evacuation and the, and the parking issue. It's, I, I could barely find park, parking when I tried to visit the site. So when I think about how many people are going to live there, and four cars there, and if they want to have guests over, I, I'm, I'm not seeing it. And it's very concerning to me, because I, I live not too far away. It's, evacuation is a real concern. Parking is a real concern. And I, I really think we need to be listening to the neighbors. That is our role, to listen to our community and the will of the people. So I'd like to emphasize that. So I guess I've heard so many comments this evening and a couple weeks ago that resonated for me. In fact, I actually already had them written down, so they stole the words from my, from my mouth. But, you know, so many of us talk about preserving the character of the town. And when I walked the streets last year and talking to residents, you know, one of my campaign messages was that I saw Fairfax changing, and I wanted to keep Fairfax livable. And what did that, what did that mean? And we had conversations, and I heard loud and clear from the people who elected me that they wanted to maintain the character of the town. And I feel like this is an opportunity before us, right before us, to listen to the neighbors who are saying, this, this house is, you know, of the average homes on the house is 212% larger than, in floor area, larger than any home on, on the street. 193% higher than the average home. 235% far higher. I mean, it's, it's on a scale basis, it's just, doesn't meet with the neighborhood design, character. It, it's disrespectful. And I really wish that there had been more dialogue. And we didn't get to this point. It's painful for, for me to know that it's gotten to this point and to hear from the community, because I know they're really, really worried about it. And I do think this is a precedent. It's happened before, but as community leaders, and I'm talking to us as a council and to the planning commission, if we love this town and we don't want these mansions, and maybe you don't, maybe you don't agree with me, but we keep saying, I hear a lot of us saying, let's protect the town character. We have an opportunity before us to say no. And please go back to the drawing board and create a more modest design that is respectful of the community, the neighborhood, and listen to your neighbors and talk about, and compromise on what would be a more reasonable design, and a more safe design from an evacuation standpoint. From an evacuation standpoint. So. That's where that's that's where I am on this.
Okay. Yeah, I have, you know, pages and pages of notes. And I've been listening with a completely open heart to everything that's been said. I share, I share many of the same thoughts that have been expressed by Barbara and John and Stephanie. And I differ in some, in some. Ways, I I I have to say that after studying and reading the. Reading the appeal, it came down to something for me where I think the appellant wrote that the planning commission had considered all of the quantitative aspects, meaning all of the code sections and looking at setbacks and floor area ratio and looking at definitions of basement and inhabitable space versus inhabitable space. And that the commission had not looked at the qualitative aspects. And when I think about the qualitative aspects, we are left with a code that does, yes, allow us discretion. It's all discretion. And it does give us an opportunity to say yes or no. Some of the public have asserted tonight that we have every right to say no. But I have to say that it is a massive responsibility, both to say yes or to say no in this situation. And. In order to say yes or no, you have to have findings that very clearly define your decision. And especially if you are depending and looking at discretionary aspects of hillside area development. And design review. And you have to decide if. This is in keeping with the neighborhood. And I might think. Well, generally, anyone looking at Walsh Lane, it does not look like the other houses on Walsh Lane. I can say that when I originally went up there and I walked the lane, I noticed that the house at the end, which I think is twenty one Walsh Lane, has the similar roof line. And was a house that frankly, I didn't feel. Fit with the other houses in the bungalow nature of the other houses on the lane in any way, to be quite honest with you. Now, remember, I'm just looking at the outside, the architecture of what I see with the lay eye, that one stands out. The house that I've loved actually on where Frustra comes in and meets Manzanita, and it's got sort of corrugated iron, it's also got that same roof line shape. It's got a bright red door, it looks very eclectic. It absolutely doesn't fit in with the rest of some of the bungalow type style houses that have existed there for so long. So when I'm asked, does it fit? Is it in keeping? I see houses that, yes, primarily the ones next to them on Walsh Lane are a certain type, except for the one at the end. But around that neighborhood, there is an eclectic mix of of different character houses. This house is bigger, obviously. I wish it wasn't so big. Quite honestly, but when I look at the things that are in my discretion, I have to look at things like, does it preserve the natural features? From what I could see. There was minimal disturbance. There were three clumps of trees, the bay trees that needed to come out. There that the natural features around, there's as little being altered as possible according to what the plans say. There's a clause that says that the approval of the hillside area residential development permit will result in an equal or better development on the premises than would otherwise have been the case. The house on the property right now is absolutely dangerous. When I think about fire, I think about the fact that that house that exists as it exists is an imminent fire threat. And needs to be torn apart from the inside, from every, every aspect of the wiring. And the materials that are on the exterior of the house as well. When I think about the parking and everyone talks about parking and evacuation, well, I couldn't agree more that we have far too many cars. And that we don't have enough room on our roads for our cars. I think that might be a slightly different story, because in this house, you've got a garage that fits two cars and a driveway that's been designed in order to have two cars parked tandemly and keep everyone off of that road. So yes, there's shuffling to go on, but our code. This meets the code in terms of our parking requirements, and it also makes it safer, because those people won't be on the road. The idea of not allowing guest parking is something that can be considered after. And you know. We talk about the character of our town, and I hate to be this way, but I have to say that, you know. The idea that it's okay to have five cars when we have three bedrooms or anything, to me, is is already affecting the character of our town. And taking space away from an opportunity for people to actually live in a house that they. That they hired an excellent architect to design. And that they have built or put in and in front of us for approval to meet every section of what from everything I can tell of the code. And that's talking about the the quantitative sections of the code. I think that the scenic enjoyment, this is straight out of the of the code. The scenic enjoyment of others is not impeded by this, and I looked from every single angle that I possibly could. The privacy to me, if I I walk down to the bottom of the property. And I looked across to Morgan's house to see if I could possibly see in there. And the only place that you can see into ten Walsh Lane is. A window that looks on to what is existing as his garage and nothing into any of the rooms. The grading, the grading that I see going on is in order to take one foot down, which actually decreases the amount of height that's needed at the top by adding one down and one up. And it's in order to put a garage in, in order to make a driveway accessible to that garage. I, this is, this is a terribly hard decision. But what we're tasked with is. It is not. We're we're tasked with something that we have to determine based on what it is that's written in our code and what we feel we can make findings on in terms of our own personal opinion of whether a house is too big. And whether it fits in the neighborhood. I believe this architect has done everything possible to meet every. Every spec in the code. And personally, I like the design. I think that what they've chosen in terms of materials are good ones, it's dark in color. And. I have many more things that I could add here, and this is a very brutal thing to do with all of these people having expressed so much passion about this. I'm not, I don't think that this is about setting a precedent for something to come in. I think it really is an opportunity to look at our code. It really is in many ways, parking. I wrote down other things that I believe we should actually look at if we're talking about evacuation, if we're looking at. Crowding, parking, those are all things that we should look at in the code. Right now, this application meets the requirements of our code from everything I could possibly learn. We hear new things at every single hearing. And I see Barbara doing the research and doing the homework in the code. And I am grateful that we got the information back from our attorney. Who stepped in only because we asked her to answer questions and she came back with an objective response. I. Wish that this looked like something that more people would be happy with. This is a terribly brutal thing to have to make a decision on. But I. I feel as though we've responded to. To all of the issues raised by the appellant.
Thank you for your very thoughtful. Really thorough comments, Renee, and your extensive research. I think you've really framed it very well, and yes, it's a very difficult decision.
So does anyone else want to do this? Brutal. Can, you know, continue the conversation, or how would you like to move from here?
I don't think that this warrants continuance. Every meeting, there's. New issues that are kind of old issues that are brought up a different way. And I think you pointed out that this does meet the code. So then there's a question of design review. And, you know, I was opposed to design review being incorporated into the planning commission, but after it was done. I think it it became very seamless. And people on the planning commission, including myself, understood that distinction. And in the staff reports, the staff always make it clear, what are those design review decisions? And how that's separate from the planning commission? So. For people that are thinking it needs to be separate. What it really did was extend the timeline and extend the confusion and did not really add anything. And I think with it being in the planning commission for now. Well, it's got to be about eight years. I think it has worked pretty well. I've heard a lot of folks saying things about this is out of the character. I think I did walk the neighborhood as well, and I think the neighborhood is pretty eclectic, as you say. There is the one house at the end of the road that's very different. But also even the house next door is much taller than what I see in some of the other cottages. And so I think it's an eclectic neighborhood. I personally think the design works fine. I think you raised issues about, you know, the parking. I mean, what they're doing is accommodating what the parking needs will be. And so in their proposal, those issues. Are really not an issue, because I go to friends of mine who lives up in the hills, there's nowhere to park, period. If you're not riding a bike like you do everywhere, there's nowhere to park up in the hills, pretty much. So by having existing parking on the site. The issue of visitors becomes every, you know, it's everyone that lives in that neighborhood, there is nowhere to park. So you're parking on another road and you're walking or you're riding your bike. So I think that is kind of a separate issue. I think the house is bigger than other houses. By eight hundred and eighty six square feet compared to the one house that's two thousand square feet. But again, I want to remind folks that we went through, I don't know how many meetings, on deciding on a cap of thirty five hundred square feet. Which some people in this town consider a mega mansion. I consider mega mansions things I've seen in places like Beverly Hills or Calabasas, where there are five thousand square feet, ten thousand square feet, twenty thousand square feet. This is a bigger house, but there are bigger houses in this town. And so I sort of look at it as. I think there have been good issues raised, but I feel that this house. Is is going to change if it was allowed, would change a very blighted structure in this area, which I think brings everything down in the area. And I remember one of the early. Items submitted by the appellant talked about the change in property values and said it could bring down property values if it was allowed, but it could also bring them up. I think the existing structure is a blank. I think it's bringing down property values. So, you know, I'm feeling, you know, I'm torn, as I believe you are, Renee. But I also think, you know, the idea of just saying it doesn't fit within the character of our town, I would challenge people to go all around town. There are different houses all around town. And so I'm not sure what the character of the town is. And when we did that cap of thirty five hundred square feet, we put a line in the sound that we don't want a forty five hundred square foot house. We don't want a five thousand square foot house. So this is within that cap. And I'm looking positively at it, but I understand the concerns that have been raised and I. Now that's where I'm at right now.
I just wanted to clarify that no one's debating that the house needs to be massive renovation and that it's potentially unsafe. I haven't heard anyone say that, but when I've spoken to many of the neighbors and there's been renovations on that on that street and no one's gotten in the way of that, they're all good people, they're all good neighbors. So no one's. Fighting this. Renovation, right? And no one's debating the need for a total remodel here. And I don't know why we're calling into question. Design of broader, homes of broader Fairfax when we're talking about the entire street is in alignment. The entire street and beyond, we've heard from other people. And Renee, you said this was my personal opinion. This is not my personal opinion. I'm listening to the community. You said it's not a matter of personal opinion, so I figured you were talking to me.
I was talking to myself.
I'm listening to my constituents. And I'm responding to the will of the people. I mean, we have heard from so many people about this. And I'm deep, and I want to state for the record that I'm deeply concerned that we are not listening to the community on this, and we are not directly responding to how thoughtfully they have shared their concerns, both from a code perspective and from a qualitative perspective. And I've said my piece.
I think just one thing to add is that. I think we're all listening and. If there is a denial. It can't just be because you don't care for it. So there has to be good rationale provided, so maybe that's something that if you want to talk about denial, you might want to push for what that rationale is. So it can't just be that I'm listening to the community, there has to be. Reasons provided as to why. This isn't workable, just.
Because of the scale and the design doesn't meet with the character of the neighborhood.
Where did you? I mean, that's, that's interesting that, I mean, is there an area that you would point out in the code that that talks speaks to that?
As as Renee pointed out, you don't have to.
Actually, you do.
No, you don't, Barbara.
Actually, you do, you do. You have to make findings, they have to be the design review guidelines that are in their code. I can find this section for you if you like.
Okay, so Janet, I've been counseled by many people on this topic. And you can support the appeal not based, you can support the appeal based on the character.
You can.
And by design.
You need to tie it to what's in the code. You need to base your findings on what's in the code. If you look at that section, I'm sure you can do that. If I may. Can I give you some options here? Because I think we're getting quickly to a point. If I may, can I give you some options here? Because I think we're getting quickly to a point where we may be stuck.
Right, but before you go there, I would like to talk about the staff report, which apparently has a two-story reference to it. Back to the two-story topic. So I, I think we might need to continue this based on that. I think that's, this is a legal issue. We might need to delve into more.
Councilmember Hellman, to respond to that briefly, I, I did look further into the question of non-conformity and the two-story portion complies with the applicable standards for the town. In other words, there are sections of the existing building that don't comply with the setbacks that of course wouldn't expand or further encroaching those setbacks. But the addition portion, the new addition two-story portion meets all applicable setbacks. So.
Your staff report Ben, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but the expansion involves a two-story addition. It's in black and white right here.
Right.
So how, how does that not open us up for liability? I mean, we just said, our town attorney just said, nope, doesn't apply here. And our staff report says expansion involves a two-story addition. I mean,
Yeah. I, I would say this is that.
This back. We need to, we need to.
It, it's a question of interpretation, but I, I would also further the town attorney's comments that we appear to be headed for a deadlock. Possibly a two-two vote, which would result in denial of the application. And I think even though the hour is getting late, insofar as this is a de novo hearing, if there are specific aspects of the project that would be helpful, even if we do end up with a continuance for redesign, it would be good to figure that out. For example, if the concern has to do with the height of the new addition. You know, you look at that butterfly roof design, you say, well, could that be a flat roof? Would that, that would take about six feet off the height of the building? Or perhaps if the, there were a consensus of the council to say, well, it's the upper story, the second story of the addition over the garage. We don't like that. We think that that could be a deck, but we don't agree with that additional square footage. I'll just put my two cents in there and say that, given that council members have visited the site, have seen that existing basement. I mean, I was in there with the applicant and they were, the, he tried to turn on a light switch and it popped. You know, that, it's not just the failing foundation. It's not just the overall dilapidated nature of the structure. This is something that, anytime you try to turn on a light switch and you hear an electrical pop and he jumps back and you know, it, it's just one of those things where from a planning perspective, you've got this existing downstairs area and it would seem reasonable to say with minimal impact on any existing physical feature, you could convert that. You're, you're talking about two feet of, of change in the structure to get a usable downstairs area. So these are just suggestions to try to move the discussion along and perhaps get towards a design. If we have to continue it, fine, but it would be helpful to the applicant and to staff if we could do that.
Let's hear, let's hear from Garrett.
Okay, so set aside what the planning director just said. In terms of the council, in terms of your actions and Janet can weigh in on this is you could, if the majority you want, obviously continue it if you believe you need more information. However, obviously what happens then is unfortunately John, John's not going to be there for your next one. You're going to have a new council member. New council member will have a learning curve. Typically what happens, they watch all these meetings, they watch the planning commission meeting, they read all the things and then they bring themselves up to speed. So that is one option. You can continue it. The other option, if you're ready, someone can make a motion. What that motion is, it's either to deny or uphold the appeal. You can make a motion. There would have to be a second. You could talk about it some more and then you could take a vote unless there's not a second, in which case someone needs to make another motion. And then we can get into the issue, what happens if there's a two-two tie on a motion. So those are kind of your, your options. Continue it, make a motion, ask for a second, take a vote. And then if it's two-two and someone else could make a motion, if it's two-two, then we can talk about what that actually means when it's two-two.
Well, if I may add on that a little bit, I'm sorry, Barbara.
Go ahead. Sorry.
Well, I just want to expand on that a little bit. There is in the packet, I believe, in a resolution denying the appeal. It takes three votes to pass a resolution. So if you, one of the options is granting the appeal. That's going to require that we have findings, that you give us enough stuff to make, to have findings written and we come back with a resolution granting the appeal because we don't have that resolution here right now. So if there are three votes to do that, we have to come back to do that and we need findings. So that's continue it. If you have questions that are left unanswered, give staff findings for granting the appeal, which is a resolution that will have to come back to you. Three votes to approve the resolution denying the appeal that's in the packet. And if you split, there's a tie vote, a two-two on that reso, then tie votes mean that there's no action, there's no approval and there's no denial. The decision of the planning commission stands.
Can I, okay. I personally don't think it's really fair to anyone to continue this at this point. I think we have listened and I want to applaud Stephanie for listening. I think all of us have listened and I think we are looking at, I think it's time to make a decision. And I don't, and I, I think to have a new council member weighing in on this just continues the process more. And I don't think we would get to a different endpoint. So with that being said, although I respect everyone who have stood up and brought issues before us, I would like to make, to make a motion to approve, to deny the appeal.
I have more comments.
Yes, so do I.
So help me understand, if Ben just acknowledged that that the expansion involves a two-story addition and the structure is inconsistent with the character of the neighboring structures, both from a scale and design standpoint, the two-story requires a variance and that's why.
That's, that's not what Ben acknowledged.
That's what I heard.
Well, I don't think that's.
That's what's in the staff report.
Okay, I think there's.
It's, it's a question of interpretation, but what I researched, and of course we are doing this on the run, but what I researched is that the two-story addition portion complies with all relevant zoning standards. So that would not apply in staff's opinion to, would not require a variance under the variance chapter. We've already discussed the non-conforming structure chapter. But in terms of the findings for Hill area residential development, you alluded to the harmonizing with surrounding development, things like that. We could get into the details. And as Janet said, we would come back with the specific findings. We just need some direction from council, but.
So I, there's, Chance comes to every single meeting. He's here on, right now. I've been so impressed with his intelligence. I have every confidence that he would get up to speed. So I don't think we need to worry about Chance's capabilities in getting up the learning curve.
No, Stephanie, it's not about Chance's capabilities.
Well, you're constantly challenging mine. So I mean, I just want to do what's right here and not worry about, you know, whether Chance is capable of making a good decision.
Let me just interrupt. I'm not questioning your capabilities and I'm not questioning Chance's capabilities. We have gone through two meetings. And John is still a member of this council. He hasn't spoken yet. I think we need to do that. And I think this idea of continuing it just because you want to extend it to have Chance here.
That's not what I want. I just, I just.
Let's let John.
Identified a real problem here.
Well, I don't think you necessarily have. I think it is in your view. And I think Ben's responded to you, but why don't we let John speak just to hear what he has to say?
Okay.
Yeah. Well, thank you. I, I think that one thing that has not been talked about here is some compromise that the neighbors can live with. And you know, that, that's really where it comes down to. The planning decision makes their decisions based on the rules and how they're written and their interpretation. It's, it's, it's a completely legal process and they don't make policy. But one thing that the council does do is they take the human qualities. They, it's political. I mean, they balance out and make a political decision. And I think this is one thing that Stephanie is bringing up is that people have a gut feeling about things. And what I brought up was this building, I mean, it's, there's no question that this building needs to be rebuilt. I mean, it, it needs some help. It's got bad electrical systems. It's, who knows what the plumbing system's like. The roof looks pretty bad. The foundation completely needs to be replaced. It needs a lot of work and that's, you know, somebody who's looking to do the kind of work that they're looking to do on a house, picks a house like this to do it on because it needs the work. It's discounted in price because of that. How does it look? And that, that's what the neighbors are responding to. And it is an eclectic neighborhood. It has a variety of houses in this neighborhood, which is frankly a very good thing. That's one of the things that makes Fairfax interesting is it's not all the same all over. You know, I think people need to be listened to and, you know, if, if everybody's having a gut feeling like, oh, you know, show us that these cars are going to be able to be there without causing a problem for everybody else. You know, the arguments that, yeah, all of Fairfax in the hills has not enough space for cars is in fact true. The fact that this house is going to be close to twice the size of everything else is also true. You know, what about a compromise? You know, maybe that is flattening out the roof. Does that make the neighbors feel enough that this is good enough? I mean, I, I, I don't want to kick it down the road either. I mean, I would like to come to a conclusion here, but you know, it's, it's hard to come up with a design, but you know, perhaps Laura, the curline, who's the architect in this situation is right at this moment thinking about like, yeah, here's a thing that we could do that would make neighbors feel better about it. And I don't know what that would be. And I don't know if she has that thought in her head, but maybe now's the time to bring that up. That, that's how, how you come to a conclusion that is satisfying to the community and the different people involved.
You know, John.
I know.
I appreciate.
Close the public part of the, the thing, but.
No, 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 it's, it's not that. I wasn't going to say that. In fact, you know, and I really hear you and appreciate what you've said about what the planning commission does with numbers and figures and dimensions and what we do is the human side. And that's what's hurting so much in having to make a decision like this, but I, I don't think it's fair for us to say to an architect who's been working on this for a year and a project manager who's been working with a owner who purchased a property with this in mind, having no idea the hornet's nest, that this would start to ask them to start going, well, we could do this and we could do that. That's a big process. And you know, we have realized that there's, there's, there's people's quality of life here going, you know, at stake. And then there's also a lot of money and a new owner's, you know, dream and desire to come and live here. So we, we have to make a decision. I don't believe we can kick this down the road. I wish there was a way that we could say, hey, maybe they can go back and do a compromise so that actually there could be a neighborhood there and this poor woman doesn't move in being, you know.
Well, I, I mean, I've seen this played out several, I, I've seen this play out several different ways in different situations. You know, one example I can think of is somebody fought for something, you know, that they really wanted on, on Piper Lane. They fought their neighbors for years. Finally, they got the entitlements for it and they sold it with those entitlements. They could not bear to live with the neighbors that they've been fighting with for three and a half years before they finally got their entitlements. And they sold it to somebody who didn't have that blood on their hands, if they will, if you will, or that bad taste in their mouth to somebody else who basically just went ahead and built the house to those plans without the baggage, the mental emotional baggage. But Frank Egger made a suggestion that we deny this without prejudice and then they can come back for another bite at the apple. That is one approach that we could have. I'm also realizing that, you know, looking at the findings that we can make, we don't have a lot of options to, you know, to support a gut feeling. So you know, if, if, if that's a workable solution, I think that, that, you know, with, with the people involved and obviously there's a lot, there's money and emotions tied up on the applicant's side and, and you know, there's a lot of emotion and I, I, I just feel like it would have been a very good thing to have more of a conversation back and forth to see what can, what can happen before it gets into what is effectively a court of law, which is the planning commission and council.
So I have a motion on the table. It may fail, but I did make a motion. And my motion is to deny the appeal. So if anyone wants to second that motion, which could include the mayor, we can take a roll call and see if it fails or not.
You know, before I were, before I were to second it and you know, it all, it all, actually it, every, it all comes out naive at this point because I agree with you, John, that it would have been a really good, it would have been really good to have brought everyone to the table. It's not our job to bring everyone to the table. It is our job to listen to the human aspects and sides of all of the people involved here in order to come up with some form of compromise, which would be to me, a better, a better, could become a better outcome. But we didn't do that and we have, we have a, a code to uphold and, and we've done a lot of work and our experts have done a lot of work and we don't, in my mind, have the grounds to, to deny this project. And so I would second council member Coler's motion.
I do want to mention that the planning commission does have a heart and does listen.
I know.
Look with solutions. It's not just at the council level.
No, I understand. Thank you. So I can ask all those in favor and I can take a roll call of that. So council member Hellman.
Nay.
Nay?
Nay.
Uh, council member Reed.
Well, by saying nay, I'm saying it's, it's going to revert to the planning commission decision, which is to uphold the appeal also. What I would like to encourage, especially this being my last effective council meeting, is to encourage conversation before it gets to this point. You know, basically this is, you know, I talked about the Piper Lane thing. There's, there's, there's other decisions where people really need to talk to each other and figure out. and figure out a compromise that works for the neighborhood. You know, and, and maybe, maybe it's putting a flat roof on it. I don't know. On, on the addition instead of the butterfly roof, which is something that, you know, you don't get to look up at the sky as much from the bedroom, but you still get a pretty nice view. And frankly, if, if I vote yes, then it has the same outcome as if I vote no because it will revert to the planning commission.
Can you give us?
Am I correct?
We have a two-minute break. I just need to ask the town attorney a couple of questions before you vote on this. It's a little.
Okay.
Okay.
Before you vote, so John, you didn't vote yet. Just take a three-minute break while we just confer and then we can come back to you with some answers.
All right.
Please. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, we're okay.
All right. I'm glad you guys are okay. We're.
So where we're at right now, I think Garrett wants me to explain exactly what happens with this vote that could, that is coming up. So we have a motion to deny the appeal, to approve that resolution that's in your packet, denying the appeal. And we have, let's see, Barbara made that motion. And Renee, you seconded that motion. And Stephanie has voted no. And we are at. Okay, so a yes vote, of course, denies the appeal and approves the resolution for denial that's in the packet. And no vote would result in a tie vote. A tie vote means the resolution of the planning commission approving the application stands. So the project is approved unless there is a further motion for a continuance that is then approved by the council. So just because you take a vote and it results in a tie doesn't mean that's it. Somebody could make a motion to continue the matter. And if that motion was approved, had three votes to continue the matter to the next meeting, two meetings out, a date certain, so it wouldn't have to be re-notice, you could continue the matter. So those, Garrett wanted me to be sure that I fleshed out that option.
Okay, but given that there's a motion and a second on the table, are you saying that we would go ahead and get John's vote? And then we would make another motion for a continue?
What I'm looking at is the section of the code, which you can look at if you like, seventeen point oh-three-six oh-six oh. Okay, appeals, action by council. You look at that section, what it says is not entirely clear, but the way we interpret it, it says, council can do all these things. Council conducts a de novo hearing. Okay.
So.
Except as otherwise, let me just finish this, Stephanie. Except as otherwise provided by law, a tie vote of the town council, which is not followed by a continuance of the matter for further consideration, shall be deemed a denial of the pending application. The pending application is the appeal. So shall be deemed a denial of the appeal on a tie vote. It goes back to the point the planning commission voted because you need a reso with findings and that's where you have your resolution with findings. But it could be, if you reach a tie vote, there could be followed a continuance. You could, somebody could make a motion for continuance and it could be approved. And then it would be continued. So I just want to make sure that you understand that sort of nuanced doctrine there.
I'm sorry, for clarification, Janet. So then if, if someone made a motion to, for a continuance and it came to a tie again.
Well, that fails. It would have to be a motion that was approved for a continuance. You see what I'm saying? I'm just saying that a tie vote is not necessarily the end of it. There is the possibility that somebody could subsequently, or right after that tie vote, make a motion for a continuance. If that motion got three votes, then it would be continued.
Okay.
Pursuant to that code section seventeen oh-three-six oh-six oh.
Okay. And another, I, I would love to know more about what that code section, what the purpose of that code section is, but that's okay. That's not at hand. So that is an option. So John, I believe you're the only remaining vote at this point.
Well, actually you made the motion and seconded, but you didn't vote yet, but.
Oh, right, exactly. Exactly. So I had.
At this, yeah, at this point, I think I would vote no. And also, well, I guess I could continue the conversation after this vote, but I would also encourage a compromise. I'd encourage people to talk to each other after putting a motion for continuance on the table.
Okay, so we have a motion Kohler, a second Goddard, council member Reed.
No.
Council member Hellman.
Don't we already do this?
Yes.
In the show.
We're doing it again. Council member Hellman.
Nay.
Council member Kohler.
Yes, that's it.
And myself, I voted yes. I just, because I just want that on the record like that. So from here, given what Janet just informed us, there is another potential action to be taken.
So I've, I've, I've already stated I want to continue it. So I'd like to make a motion to continue it based on the code, the whole second story. I don't have the code in front of me, but what Larry, Mr. Larry Bragman raised.
Right, you don't even have to say that. You could just say you want a motion to continue the matter.
I'd like to make a motion to continue the matter.
And I would second that motion.
Excuse me, this is the clerk. Do you want to do this to a date, a certain date?
Why don't we see how we go first?
Well, part of the motion needs to be a date.
Like December 2nd, December 16th.
Stephanie, pick a date.
Um, it really doesn't matter to me.
The sixteenth would be the logical date.
Pardon me?
The sixteenth would be the logical date.
Okay.
I would second that.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion Hellman and a second Reed. Council member Kohler.
No.
Council member Hellman.
Yay.
Council member Reed.
Yes.
And myself, I, I vote no.
Okay, so there are not three votes then to approve the resolution in the packet, denying the appeal and the decision of the planning commission approving the application stands.
Okay. Well, it's been a very sobering evening. Thank you, everybody, for your participation. To everyone for coming out and and I think a lot was learned. So we will adjourn tonight and we will meet again in, in open session. Town council's regular meeting on December 2nd at 7:00 PM. Okay? All right.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.